I just want to be very clear. Lahaina is not for sale. Islandwide, we will need financial assistance for small independent businesses, worker relief, mortgage assistance, a moratorium on foreclosures. But I wanted to start this morning with a quote from my good friend Kawila Handchuk. "The Kupa Aina, the people of this place, are not the passive recipients of aid. They are the navigators, and I've been seeing this every day and night for the past two weeks. Our people are our greatest resources. Their relationships and resilience are so far beyond anything I could begin to describe. As we try to process our grief and loss, as we try to heal and lift one another up, we are trying to navigate a way forward for our keiki. We need to find other places to continue their education. Places far outside of the burn zone where our keiki will not be exposed to the consistent memories of the trauma they may have suffered through. All of our senses are heightened when a change like this happens. The smell, the heat, the visuals of what is left of Lahaina is a message young minds should not endure at this time. Our priority is keeping our families and students together and finding a space for them that has far less impact and clean conditions that allow them to be outside. The curriculum needs to be... Needs to engage our youth with the hope, possibility, and inspiration of what can be, to give them a sense of belonging and tap into their own creativity. Please know that life on the west side is still a struggle. Communications are not fully restored. The situation is very fluid and things are constantly changing. Many people have lost their modes of transportation. And although they're out there working day in and day out, they also need support physically, emotionally, and financially. I wanted to extend my greatest gratitude for the people from around the world that have reached out and have sent aid, have come with their bodies to help us to... To the Lomi practitioners and all the healers that have flooded Lahaina west side and lifted us up. We need to, um... We need to honor all those people that we've lost by trying to prevent this from happening to any other community in Maui, in Hawaii, in the world. And, and in these times of climate change, there will be worse disasters. And so we need to also build up our resilience and, um, have better responses to our people. Four days without communication, five days, two weeks, it's all too much. And it's important, I know that everyone here wants to help, but the people in West Maui can't see this meeting. The people in West Maui don't know what's going on. And if we're doing things for them, we need to be doing things with them. Because unless you're communicating with them, we don't know best how to help them. We have to meet them at the level where they're at. And things are very hard right now in Lahaina. And, and there's so many people trying to help, but... Please, please include us in the plans. Please don't do things for us without us. Thank you.
My name's Justin Huey. I am a teacher, a third grade teacher from the burned-down King Kameha Meha the Third Elementary in Lahaina. And I am testifying on my concerns of the governor's emergency proclamation that happened three weeks prior to the fire and how it suspended seven state statutes of which exonerated everything that you guys are in charge of. Covers county organization administration, chapter forty-six. Collective bargaining was rescinded. School impact fees, collective bargaining was rescinded. And to my knowledge, this was the first emergency proclamation in the country that didn't have a preceding incident. Normally, it's like a hurricane, boom, we got an emergency proclamation. But this was just, from my knowledge, was just to streamline development on Maui. And it is allocated all decision-making power to one person, the housing officer of the governor, Nani Maderos, who's unelected, who can trump every single thing that you do and everything that you say and every item that we cover without any input from the community, without any public discourse, without sunshine law. I have, I am, before I go to my, you know, tomorrow, I love what you said, Lahaina's not for sale, please include us. But I don't see that happening. And I was able to meet with Nani Maderos. I graciously invited her into my home in order to speak with teachers from, that had, from the burned-down King Kameha Meha the Third Elementary and their own homes. And they're moving forward with, with, they're meeting with developers, private, private landowners, and not a lot of community unless you know how to maneuver correctly. So before I go to my next item, I would just like to ask each council member to let me know, are you in favor of this emergency proclamation that takes away sunshine law, collective bargaining, your, your, all your power in decision-making? I would like it if you did me a kindness and, and before I go on to the next item that I want to testify on, who's in favor of that? Because I have serious concerns.
Mr. Huey, we don't have discussions at this point. We're just taking testimony. But I'm sure each member will be happy to respond to you on their own.
Alright, so can we end this item and go to the next item?
Sure, yes.
So, um, so I, I, I started, I asked and was, I was asked to start a teacher work group with HSTA on housing. And I was able to get people that talked, were able to talk to Nani Maderos. And they really need, you know, I would love to see you pass a resolution on foreclosures, mortgage eviction, subsidized rentals. It's a lot of different things happening right now. Like, there's one teacher that lives on this side but had three other jobs besides teaching in Lahaina and has a $4,000 mortgage. So he, his house didn't burn down, but he's going to lose his house if something isn't done quickly. A different teacher who's had their house burned down, moved over here and is trying to buy a house over here, but other investors are trumping her. And I, I just, I just can't say enough about my concern over the fact that we have streamlined development without any community input, without sunshine law, without public announcements, without meeting notices. Everything you, I just can't say enough. Everything that you do can be trumped by one person who's unelected and has no community input. And for me, I just, I, I just think that, you know, I wouldn't know why... She also said that she met with four council members and they were in complete agreement with the emergency proclamation. So that means there's four council members here, allegedly, that she stated, are in agreement with getting rid of sunshine law, collective bargaining, school impact fees, and chapter forty-six. And it's like, my question is, why did, why, why did you run if you're not going to step up to the, to the plate when we need you the most? And this needs to go. This needs to go right now. This is disaster capitalism. Of $5 billion are coming to Maui and sticky fingers are here to take it all and develop everything without any, without any input. Lahaina needs to decide what happens in Lahaina. And, but it's not just there, it's everywhere. And any, anything you do on this island can be trumped by one person. And more people need to be standing up and saying that this is not, this is not how government works. This is not how we teach our children, how government works. And, and, and this cannot move forward. Biden came and spoke with the community at the civic center. And Biden said that, you know, Maui is going to build, is going to decide Maui's future. But again, one person on a Wahoo is currently meeting with developers, meeting with private landowners, and is not meeting with the public. And that should be front page everywhere. And anything you do is going to, can be trumped by one person without any notice. And you won't know until it happens. I, I, I'm thankful for Biden coming here when he did, not right away, and being there for the community. But this is a state and county issue. And the state and the county are going to decide how the rebuilding efforts go. And I would really like to see the county take, reconsider what they've, if they've been in favor of this and pass a resolution against, against the governor's emergency proclamation on affordable housing that happened three weeks prior to the wildfire.
I'm David Oy, the finance manager for the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation. We're also known as HHFTC. I'm testifying in support of resolution twenty-three one ninety-three. We are providing the low-income housing tax credits, tax-exempt bonds, and the gap financing for the project in Kihei, Haleop K O One. This project is a hundred percent affordable, ninety-unit family project located in Kihei. It will serve those in the thirty, fifty, and sixty percent AMI categories with one dedicated homeless unit. This project is currently on its bond closing calls and would like to target a closing in September. The groundbreaking of this project would take place shortly thereafter. And this would enable the commencement of the closing of phase two of the project, which is a ninety-seven unit senior housing project serving those in the thirty, fifty, and sixty percent AMI category with a dedicated special needs and homeless unit as well. If this resolution can pass and we can maintain the schedule for closing, the developer anticipates closing both phases, which would total one hundred and eighty-seven affordable units by quarter one, twenty twenty-five. I come here to respectfully request the support of this resolution on the project. Once this matter and building permits are issued, we can actually schedule the project for closing and we can get these units built, get people to work on construction, and show people that we're actually developing new units of affordable housing, permanent affordable inventory.
Fire is Susan Pacola Davis testifying.
Thank you for the opening remarks. They were beautiful. I'm concerned about the resolution because it reinforces the third proclamation by the Maui mayor that is in effect for sixty days or October fifteenth. I'm not sure if this resolution has an expiration date, but it has to be carefully looked at. The governor and mayor promising that the Lahaina families will design their Lahaina is full of press conferences saying one thing and then something different. The difference comes from each layer of government, power, the state government, and the county government. When it comes to emergency management, county tops state. Bill, House Bill eight forty-nine passed in June the third, two thousand fourteen, passes the state governance down to the county. It doesn't remove the state, but the county does have a lot of say in emergency management. Currently, there is the governor's emergency proclamation, the Maui mayor's emergency proclamation number three, and this resolution that we're hearing today. All three of these, in my opinion, significantly limits all powers of the people. Resolution one nine four states with the understanding that residents directly impacted by the wildfires have the most relevant expertise. What do you mean by that? Numbers one through three of the resolution are specific to council rules and council committee chairs and council committees. But then you have the last sentence, which is saying residents directly impacted by the wildfires have the most relevant expertise. The county council must publicly announce all upcoming council meetings and committee meetings with enough advance notice so the public can participate. They can't because it's largely due to communication issues since the fires. It's almost like we need to relocate this meeting so that the public that has been most effective can actually get here. Or maybe we could get buses to bring people here. There's not that many people in here. I expected more. No, I expected less. I'm thank you for coming. The public must be allowed to testify at all these council and council committee meetings. The council must hold community meetings to listen to the people of Maui, not to fight with them. No later than August thirty-first, twenty-three. Let me go down to the last two. Three. The Maui government must ensure the safety of our keiki. All schools must have water and air tested. The results of these tests must be publicly available. All classrooms need to be professionally cleaned prior to student attendance. Any signs of dust, debris, or other dangerous particulate is visible already. The Maui government must use a third-party environmental consultant and expert to test the water, soil, and groundwater. All results must be made publicly available. These tests must include the minimum EPA-regulated contaminants. As determined by the environmental consultant, other samples and tests will be conducted and made public. And we're already here that there's other substances that will need to be tested individually. The Maui government, this I've heard a lot, must allow animals and pets in any area that are roaming to be captured by a responsible entity, such as the Maui Humane Society, to safely secure them, not to cause further harm due to lack of supply or water or food or veterinary care. This is cruelty to animals. It's cruelty to families that are looking for their pets, that can't find them, that could console them in this time of grief. The rest of my testimony is online and I'm trying to respect the time limit. Community meetings need to be, start happening with the people. Community council members can go out there and do that. They need to be heard.
Just one clarification for those who will be testifying on this issue. There'll be no legislative action taken today. What's going to happen is we're going to refer this item to the great committee for further discussion. A lot of discussion and extensive outreach. Thank you.
The next testifier is Paul Chang, testifying on...
Thank you for allowing me to have an opportunity to speak in the horrible last couple of weeks. I just have some short, a short statement, and that is that we did start construction in Poli Luhur from the groundbreaking. We are probably thirty percent done with the grading and the retainer walls and for the first two hundred and forty units. As you may remember, we have a total of eight hundred multifamily units available, residential units available on the zoning. So I've looked at the plans and if the council feels like we can be of help, we stand ready to help. We can continually bring units on in our phase two. We can add two hundred more units to phase two to make it a total of eight hundred right away. And because of the tragedy, I, I'm totally, totally willing to give up the market rate units and work with the county and state to make it all affordable so that, you know, we can do this. Because now is not the time to talk about money. Now is the time to talk about housing, what people desperately need. So I stand ready to help the council any way I can. And we can immediately push forward. There are some little administrative items, obviously, we need to take care of. But I'm sure we can work it out with the county. And we will just do this and help everyone. So I'm here to help. I want you to know. And, and, and even as far as a temporary campus for school, any, any and all that, we have the land. It just so happened that we are unhurt and thank goodness for that. So if you need a temporary campus location, we have to, we have it. And we can make it happen. We already had a, a permanent school location dedicated to begin with. As you remember, we have thirteen acres we've already given to the school district for the permanent new elementary school. But that's up at the state level, we understand. We are under construction now. We just need to change the, the, the market rate units to affordable and work out the details on that. And we keep on building. We can continually build up to eight hundred units. Just keep going. But we just need the mechanism to do so. And we stand ready, you know? There's no other, we, we have, for example, like, I did have a chance to speak to somebody at state. And the first question they asked me was, do you have cultural clearance? Yes, I do. As you may remember, Poli Luhur is the, one of the rare, rare sites where we have complete shifty clearance. We don't even need monitoring during construction. That's how clean we are because we did a thorough study prior. Thanks to Kai Nihiki's advice, I, I organized a full cultural study for the site. So we have no impediments other than administrative issues, which is fine. We have plans, ready to go. It, it so happens that I was literally going to submit my utility plans and my vertical building plans two weeks from now. This is how ready we are. And while several, if, if we can resolve, resolve all the issues, not resolve, that work out the details, I think fifteen, sixteen months, you know? We just got to have a green light. I just got to know the, the county's, you know, permit review department is behind me. Then they can put it on priority to review, you know, all the plans and stuff when I submit. You know, turn it around in a couple of weeks, you know? Things like that, just details that, you know, not at the council level, but at the practical level. I, I want to get some directions from the council. How many units you want? Do you want it for rental? Do you want it for sale? Obviously affordable. And that has, you know, a strategic implication on the future unit. How many more do you want? And when do you, you know, what kind? Just tell me, rent or sale? How many? And then I'll, I'll go to work.
All the council members, my name is Jordan Hawker. Today, I am representing the Maui Tenants Association on resolution twenty-three dash one nine four. So I want to paint a picture for you council members. Through this period of loss, I'm going to start about three years back. When the pandemic hit, there was an eviction moratorium. But people were able to sell their houses and they were able to raise the rents, which meant that even with good intention legislature, our renters were still displaced during a time of emergency. UH Hero, which is a research capacity of UH, did a housing survey. And something like sixty percent of landlords reported that they believed their tenants were struggling. This is sort of post-COVID. And now we're going to fast forward to today. The Maui Tenants Association has a hotline. We've been receiving call after call of people who are being asked to be evicted by their landlords. People who are being displaced during a time of emergency when their house was like the only house standing in their neighborhood. And despite the fact that that's not supposed to be able to happen, not only are they still experiencing it, our renters here aren't even aware of what the law is. I would ask each council member to take stock. How many renters do you have in your district? And how many of them are being threatened with eviction simply because the owner of the house realized that their investment is no longer a sound investment? If you have the one standing rental in Lahaina, and some of you might have actually seen this going around on social media, it was a unit with nine tenants in it. And just a handful of days after what happened in Lahaina, their landlord tried to evict them, stating that he had talked to the mayor about setting up a command hub. Well, multiple people called the mayor and that couldn't be corroborated. We reached out to the tenant and let him know, hey, I know you're freaking out right now, but he actually cannot kick you out. So breathe. These are people undergoing immense trauma, regardless of whether or not their rentals are still standing, and some of them are not, many of them are not, we know that. This body will need to stick its neck out. In affordable housing, we talk about affordable renters, rentals, but we don't really talk about renters' rights. We don't really talk about renters' stability and how renters need to remain housed. We don't talk about how many parents are renters, how many children are in houses that are rentals. And up country currently, I rent. And through no fault of my landlord, I have no safe water amongst many people I know. A woman who was off of Ainakula, a family, a small family, had to evacuate. And their property manager had the nerve to say, well, when they came back, because their house was filled with ash, that they didn't deserve...
Three minutes.
I'll finish up. That they didn't deserve to still remain in the property because they left the windows open when they were evacuating. They're being harassed. The landlords who have the gumption and the gall, the nerve and the lack of empathy to push evictions on their tenants right now do not care. And I will say that community has shown up first and foremost in this disaster. I think we all can agree on that. But government bodies need to catch up. Renters deserve stability just as anyone else. And with everyone displaced from Lahaina at this point, after the emergency proclamation is gone, you can charge whatever you want for a rental because the demand is so high. Please consider us. The Maui Tenants Association will not stop fighting for Maui's renters. We are here, we are here for you. If you're listening to this, eight oh eight four 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 one 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 nine. We have a hotline for you. Please call us. We are standing for you. We are not going to lay down. And I hope that this body especially, in areas that have been affected and areas that haven't been affected, stick your neck out for us because we're going to ask you to do it, so be prepared.
My name's Anthony Sands. Me, I own a company called Above Earth. We offer quick setup, sustainable, off-grid, temporary, and long-term housing that's international building code approved, hurricane, an earthquake and seismic, and also fire. We can set these up on unimproved land anywhere in the state of Hawaii in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And we respect the land. By sustainable, I mean no external power, no sewer, no septic needed, no external water. Nothing comes in or out of the ground. That's why we call it Above Earth. We can scale this very quickly. Within sixty days, we'll be shipping. We can ship hundreds of units. We can move the units when the need for them is, is complete. They're nice houses. They're a thousand square foot minimum. They can have kitchens and everything, so it's a semblance of a house. We can set them on any soil, ten percent gradient. We support the Maui County Code sixteen dot one oh five dot two dot one and the resolution twenty-three dash one nine four to help speed your healing process.
My name is Lisa Darcy, and I am the founder of Sher Yabana. I have worked with individuals with disabilities and who have lived houses on Maui for twenty years. I am unfit to testify today. I know this. I'm going to jump around and I am going to apologize. I'm here to testify on twenty-three dash one ninety-four. I am so sorry. Twenty, twenty years of testifying and bringing education to this community. Councilmember Paul, in your words, your eloquent words on inclusion are something that I think everybody in this room understands. are something that I think everybody in this room understands. Sher Yarmana is intimately involved with and has worked tirelessly for inclusion. And that those who are in the positions are intimate in those moments and have to be at the table. And throughout this, this new crisis, Sher Yarmana's voices again have been eliminated because we have the roadmap to what is gonna happen to so many of these people in Lahaina. Many people are not gonna recover. And there's no systems in place currently to help them from falling into this despair. I come today to request that the mayor walk back his policy as of seven twenty, his policy on addressing unsheltered residents in Maui County. I ask that you heed the comments of many of the previous testifiers, which indicate the ability to eliminate the wisdom that is in this community. So reverse that policy. I am working right now so that individuals who are living unhoused do not have their property and their items removed and destroyed as we speak because that is happening. And so anybody who falls into this, get ready. Get ready for how the county's about to treat you, okay? And they're gonna eliminate who you are and they're just gonna call you a success because they removed a pile of, of items that they call trash or they removed your vehicle you're living in because you don't feel safe enough to leave it. So get ready. It's not a pretty picture. I'm gonna change the way I approach this council. I have done my best to be patient and to ask for inclusion. And I'm not happy with.
Three minutes.
Being limited to twenty years of experience in three minutes. As the national and international press continue to ask the questions, this community has to ask those questions too. I am working with easily twenty people that got housed during this as collateral damage. And their lives are now, most of them are getting, they're, they're even worse off now. I'm coordinating hospital visits because of the way that the system and the, and the governor has imposed rules without any, any dialogue with any of the people who are doing the work on the ground. It's unacceptable. It's harmful. We're wasting a lot of money and we're harming lives. I have no good news today. I love to say I have good news you can use, but I can't call. Picking somebody off of the ground in a near-death situation, good news anymore? I can't do it and I can't champion it. I need your help. I need every one of your help. Every one of you needs to stand up where you are on these situations and these laws and these proposals. And you need to say it clearly so we know and we can address it. I think I have to legally say I'm a commissioner on the healing solutions for homelessness. I hate missing protocol. And I want you to know that they canceled their meeting this month along with the Maui Homeless Alliance, okay? Okay? How's that helping? I'm just saying, just, just asking. Mahalo.
Chair council members, my name is Colin Aquino. And in the interest of disclosure, I advise you that I am a battalion chief in the Maui Fire Department and the commanding officer for Wailuku, who is Maui Molukai Alani. I didn't really come here with a plan to speak. I just kinda saw the sign up and did. And I wanted to just share some of my, and so I advise, I'm, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the Maui Fire Department. What we in Lahaina need for responders for the community, is we need to be accessible. We need our council members, we need our politicians, our leadership to be visible and accessible to our people right now. That is what is gonna drive the most hope and gonna build the best relationships. I know for the council members here, each of you have staff. I would ask that you either actively, not saying that you have, and again, this is, I have a very narrow view of the incident only from where I've been for the last two weeks. But what I would ask is that you really look at the opportunity to embed with our local communities in Lahaina. This, you know, you, you're in a hugely unique popu, in, um, time in our, in our county, in our county history where really, we need you more than we've ever needed you. And that's the truth. Our, our people, our responders, the community needs you more than we've ever needed you. So I know you have staff. What I would ask is, you know, like Uncle Archie's house, you can embed staff in his daily briefings every day. You guys can get out. You guys, with permission of my boss, of course, are welcome to jump in my B C vehicle and ride around with me anytime you want for perspective, to see the community, you know, try and get out to the pods as much as I can, get out to the medical units, K P volunteering and stuff. So really, that's the impression that I want to leave is, you know, as much as possible to be visible and accessible to everyone as best you can right now. I know that's asking a lot because we're already asking so much of you. But the, the best you can do, we'll take any of it. And so the last thing I'd like to say is when you chose to run for these seats and when you were elected, you chose to be representatives of the people you serve. The way our elections work, those people include Lahaina. And also, I would ask for not just Kanaka, non-Kanaka council members here. When you chose to be elected, you didn't choose, you didn't just choose to serve the people, you chose to serve the land because that is what Hawaii is. And you're in a unique place where Hawaii, the land and the people are one. So please keep that in mind. And again, mahalo for all the work that you guys have been doing and that we will ask of you in the future. So I mean, uh, as a native Hawaiian and for all of us here, as I mentioned, whether you're Kanaka or you're not Kanaka, if you choose to be a part of this community, be a part of Maui, be a part of Hawaii, and identify that as your home, then all the expectation, the only thing I can ask as a native Hawaiian is that you love and you respect the land as us that have been here for hundreds of years, generally, generationally. So because of our unique relationship of being Kanaka and our connection to the land, we would expect and ask it should be a steward and love it just as much as us. And for me as a native Hawaiian, that's enough. That's all I ask.
Mahalo for your response to my question. And when you say land, do you also mean water?
Of course.
Mahalo for your clarification.
So if I may add, with respect is, I think no Hawaiian in here would disagree with me, but those words are synonymous. Anybody, anybody feel different?
Not everyone understands that, um, from our cultural lens, that they're one in the same.
Madam Chair, if it's all right with everyone, I'd like to give a puli.
Members?
Because I am La'au Lapau.
Members, no objection, no objections.
This is Kahiko Puli o Lapau. The ancient prayer hili. Kahiko Puli o Lapau. Eku e, eina e. Eke lavi mai a keili a keia la'au. Imea ho'ola no'kamea kako. Vehe aku oi ia na pili kiya amen na mai a pau. Maluna o konakina a liko keia la'au i la'au. Ho'ola no'ou makou. Eku e, eina e, eina e i. Amini. Uh, some of you understand what I said, some of you don't understand the school. What I'm asking is for medicinal healing herbs. Now, I feel I in place in this, I'm important. Because why is that? We have all this pili kiya going on. So I'm gonna continue. I'm Dennis Kai Hui, I'm from Kenai. I'm a Kahula'au Lapau, a practitioner healer. So my testament is about Ha'ola'au Lapau. Ho'oponopono'au Lapau is realigning a breath of life as aloha. We must remember that aloha. Okay, ho'oponopono'au Ha'ola'au Lapau begins and ends with people. So what I say is we gather together, Hui, yeah, we talk story because this is part of the healing, okay? But there's a pili kiado. In Honolulu Star Bulut in August eighteen, Hawaii Electric got blamed. Uh, and criticized because they started, uh, the fire started from a downed electric power pole that created the fire Lahaina and Kula. Someone complained Hawaii Electric should have turned the power off during high winds. And there was a red flag warning, condition for Maui County. They still would have been blamed if something else happened, if they did shut the power off. A retired judge from up country blamed the, and suing Hawaii Electric Company because his house got burnt down. Imagine the problems of people, life support device, system not working, and traffic intersection gridlocks. Another county council got blamed. There wasn't enough water in the reservoir tank to peel the fire. What would happen is we were to use all the freshwater resource to peel the fire. That county official resigned from his position because he felt responsible. Why didn't someone blame the national guard? Because they waited after the wind died down. Another county official got blamed because the warning sireen never went on. He still would have been blamed if people ran into the fire of thinking a tsunami warning. On Google's internet that showed videos of people standing and wandering about on Lahaina Front Street. What happened to common sense and people helping people? Listening to the many people that I was, uh, impacted by the fire as I was giving massage therapy treatment at the Maui Memorial, I realized there are people with common sense.
Three minutes.
That take action and people helping people. It is just that you don't see them, but they are there. They are the ones that, um, that, that takes action. They are not the ones blaming, complaining, criticizing. They are the silent ones doing what needs to be done, taking action. If, if some people still want justice, they might not blame God. Yeah, blame God. Let's put God on trial. God, you are bound guilty of creating the dry grass, creating the wind that downed the power pole and life and created the fire that caused severe damage to Lahaina property, killed, caused death. We, the people, found you guilty and sentenced you to death.
Can you please, can you please?
You are dead.
Excuse me.
Are in the tire.
Excuse me.
You're almost done, yeah?
Oh, okay. Mahalo.
As a Kahula'au Lapau, we need to forgive. That word forgive. It's, it's unconditional love, okay? So respect the dead, care for the living and begin ho'oponopono'au for all of Lapau. Realign ourselves and focus our priorities, needs, breath and deep aloha and move forward. Stay diligent, okay? So La'au Lapau is my kuliana, responsibility to protect the people dignity and Kanaka Maoli culture. To bring this, so my proposal for this council, there are three. Before any work, construction and building begins, I ask oli and puli to be done, performed after impact Lahaina area might be to location. Reasons Kahiko, Oimi and Hemolele of those who passed away, ancient bones, lays, flowers, herbs given by all people. Culture information, honor prep readiness, kupuna or picnic are welcome to sit in and listen in to some of these county officials.
Hello, council members. My name is Michael Schifler. I am the CEO of a charity group called Red Lightning. We are internationally recognized since two thousand and ten and we study disasters. We have categorized and looked at, I don't wanna discount anything that's happened, but we've looked at the Lahaina fires and studied it. And we really break it down into four separate disasters. Those who have lost their lives and have perished. Those who have been displaced and are facing housing challenges. The survivors on the west side who were cut off from water, food, power and are continuing to be cut off. And there is an economic tsunami coming towards Maui that many have spoken about. If we put a percentage on what was lost on the west, west side and we say, what percentage of that was tourism for the economy? I don't know the exact numbers, but I would dare say it's in the fifty percent range. Front Street is not going to be rebuilt quickly over time. And because of these economic hardships, we're warning, we want, want to give a respectful warning that those financial hardships will compound the problems for those who remain here. All, all of those categories are going to face this sooner or later at some point. Today, two weeks into the disaster, Red Lightning is mostly concerned about what we call the node problem. The node problem happens, this is predictable, we can see it in every disaster, is that when distribution hubs are set up and, and aid is flowing, it's, it's a wonderful, amazing thing. But there are members of the community who are vulnerable, who cannot go to those hubs either through physical disability, language barriers, handicaps, maybe they're old, maybe they're afraid. We have been focusing on installing Starlink satellite internet systems. There's huge communication problems. We've been working closely with Tamara Palton. She has been showing up every day. She has, she has given it everything. I've been doing this for thirteen years. I've never seen a local response like this ever. I've done it all over the world. I've never seen it like here for the Hawaiian people. But today, we, I, I'm standing before you and speaking on behalf of the vulnerable people who cannot make it to the hubs. We have placed about seventy Starli, Starlink units. We have another fifty-three on order. I'm going to give you the name and the number of our operations manager and, and as well as Tamara. We work very, very closely with her. If you know of anybody who is vulnerable and has been cut off and is unable to communicate, we want to know who they are so we can get them set up and that they can at least make requests for things that they need, medicine, water, food, things of that nature. Point out, so in our response, we, we had difficulty getting in to the disaster zone originally. There were, there were checkpoints set up. We were trying to bring these systems in. We were, we were turned around a couple of times. I have made every effort to become a member of the, the E O C to coordinate with them. And I've been turned around every time. We cannot get a, a seat or position there to coordinate. And so the decision was made to, was made to focus with Tamara and, and try to get these units out as soon as possible. We have a team of about three people, so we can install, you know, ten to fifteen of these a day. But the access, um, I think there was one in Kahoma Village. It's sort of down by Front Street. We were denied there as well. There were a number of families that we, that asked for help. We couldn't, we could not reach them. We, we think our number right now will be over a hundred units. There's a subscription fee that we have on them. We move them from location to location. So as one, one user has their, you know, their cable restored, we would take it and move it. The subscription fees, we anticipate will be about twenty-five thousand per month. And we think it'll be at least two months. This would put the number in about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand easily for the next two months.
And have you been getting aid from any of the, um, people that are collecting donations for Maui?
We have received individual donations from West Maui donors, individuals, fifty, hundred, you know, like that. We have not received any major donations from any other funders at this time. You, well, UPS is one of our funders, so we work with UPS Foundation. And then the money that, that you have raised, uh, just asking people to donate, that's, those are the sources of our support right now. That's it.
Thank you. That's, that's unfortunate. Okay, thank you.
There's a company called SpaceX founded by Elon Musk. And he's, he's the one who's setting up all these rockets with satellites over the world. So the way it works is basically, it's an internet system that connects to the satellites. So it doesn't need, um, you know, cable. If cell towers go down, it'll still work. All it needs is, is a source of power. It can be through a battery, a generator or an inverter in a car. And this would give the user access to the internet to make phone calls, text messages, emails. It's extremely useful in disasters because comms go down. We'll probably continue to do this moving forward. Uh, but it's a vital tool in response. Probably one of the most important ones because it allows for coordination, calls for help, direction of resources. Without that, the survivors are operating in the dark. So this is a, it's a fabulous, incredible tool. SpaceX has even provided these to us at a huge discount, I think seventy percent off on most of them. Uh, there's a subscription fee and there's, that we're, you know, we're working through those things, but they've been an amazing partner and, um, we look forward to, as, as many as we can put down, we will.
Thank you for that explanation. And what is this, how much is this subscription fee? And this, is it like monthly, is it?
Yeah, it's a great question. There's two units that we're putting down. One is a residential model, which supports up to five users. One is a high-performance model, which is really designed for businesses. That will support up to two hundred users. You can set these up as residential units, which means they would stay stationary and they're not really supposed to be moved. Or we can set these up as mobile units where we can pick them up and move them freely. We have opted at the recommendation to do almost all these units as the mobile units because it allows us to move them from user to user without having any of these extra hurdles to jump through. The resident, the residential units, their retail price is six hundred dollars.
Per month?
That's just. That's just for the hardware.
Oh.
That's just for the hardware. And we've gotten, the price changes depending on when we order. We, with the first few, we paid full retail. Then we got them at 160, now they're at 190. The high performance models, those run $2,500. We were able to get them through SpaceX for about 1,000. And we bought as many as our budget would allow. Then there's a monthly subscription fee, which is 200 to 250 dollars per month. So if you figure if we have, you know, 100 of them and we're paying the 250 dollars per month, that adds up pretty quick.
Okay, thanks.
So the signal comes into a satellite receiver, which goes into a wifi hub. The wifi hub is limited by about 100 feet, so in a radius. So you have to be in that radius for it to work. And if you're not, then you're not going to have access. So we're trying to set these up in high traffic areas. The good thing about all Starlink systems is they have unlimited bandwidth, which means they can use as much data as they want. There is priority data you can get, which would make it work faster, higher data rates and speeds. But as long as they're up and running, there should be some type of connection, you know, anywhere from 10 to 20 megabits per second.
And, and I just wanted to clarify for those that have Starlinks, it's for emergency use. It's for calls, texts and emails. And if people start watching videos, streaming, gaming, the usage will slow down significantly.
That, that is correct. And, and we have to put up signs and say, no streaming, no gaming, no, no FaceTiming, texts, emails only, you know, face communications. Great point. But we will continue to do this as long as it is needed. At the end of the usage, we will, if, if users want to buy it or just give it to them, we'll do that too. If they, if, you know, if they just need it, we'll just leave it with them, sign it over to them. They can take over the subscription fee. And that's how we, we envisioned this. Some of, some of, we'll give them back to us and we'll take them and put them in storage.
Testifier is Pamela Toompop testifying.
Thank you all for meeting today. As we're hearing and we too have experienced some challenges in connecting with the EOC and connecting the EOC with resources that we're receiving. But we're thrilled to see this meeting and everybody coming together around Resolution 23194. And we want to echo the sentiments in the Wera's clauses in the resolution. We join with all of Maui County residents in solidarity, sympathy and mourning for the lives that have been lost in this disaster. We're all heartbroken and as was said earlier on, we all know people impacted. We've lost valuable cultural and historic assets and numerous Maui County residents have lost their homes, possessions, pets, businesses, jobs and schools and are facing short and long-term loss. An economic hardship and mental, physical and emotional challenges that are going to last for decades. So as this tragedy continues to unfold, impacting our entire economy and community, we really want to work with county officials as they are fulfilling their responsibilities and acting with respect, compassion and diligence to mitigate the harm to residents and businesses in the time ahead. We appreciate that the council members and legislative branch have been working very hard with the emergency management teams on island FEMA and SBA. And of course, all of our first responders, our firefighters, our police and others. To help us get through this as quickly as possible while being respectful. And we wanted to offer some suggestions that as we set new policy, this resolution is the start of regenerating policies for a robust and comprehensive recovery and resiliency plans that the administration and public can implement. We need very specific plans in each phase, including plans for recovery, resiliency, restructuring and rebuilding. We want to ask that you consider creating task forces with community members and experts to start this focus on resiliency and new ways of rebuilding to provide adequate fire, flood, disaster protection, keeping in mind sea level rise, hurricanes and more. Economic sectors revitalizing ag and our visitor industry under the way we've been looking at it through the DMAP process and including new and emerging industries. Creating messages to encourage visitors to come back to areas not impacted by the fires and educating them on the importance of how to be respectful, heed restrictions and warnings and teach them about our culture. This is critical to our economic recovery. And Maui Island specific, a marketing plan to market and promote Maui through new and positive messages. Sharing our recovery and resiliency efforts of people worldwide have chosen to contribute and help them.
Three minutes.
I have so much more to say, but I will stand on our written testimony. Think there are some, some fixes that need to be made within the system. We've still have businesses who can't get out and see their properties. We've got FEMA and SBA and we're trying to convey critical messages to help people get access to services as quickly as possible. The chamber is here to help all businesses. And we also, of course, want to support and stand on written testimony on the other measures before you today that help expedite housing and that help with grantees, address how they can submit their receipts. So we, thank you.
My name is Kim Willenbrink. This brief testimony is for Resolution 23-194. I'm reading this message on behalf of Dr. Reza Donish, MD and Chief Executive Officer of Moto For the People, a nonprofit organization providing acute emergency and preventative healthcare to Maui's underserved population. Chair Lee and members of the council, I am sorry that I could not be here in person to say mahalo for quickly setting in motion a process by which this county can revisit emergency action procedures and move forward in confidence. My team and I were some of the first responders to the devastation in Lahaina that dreaded morning after the fires. I am board certified in emergency medicine and I drove the fully equipped Moto Medical Unit to the scene as soon as I heard the news. We were able to quickly set about helping victims and later set up a tent to see patients in immediate need of medical care. My team has worked tirelessly and we have nothing but gratitude for the outpouring of local and global support. I am humbled by the unified presence of the medical community in the days since this tragedy. My testimony is to offer my assistance and knowledge when drafting a comprehensive recovery and resiliency plan. As a member of this community, a member of the medical community for 12 years and mostly as a voice for homeless, underserved, overlooked patients with limited access or any individuals that need free or low-cost onsite healthcare, whether it be during an emergency or on a typical day on this island.
My name is Robin Knox. I'm testifying in support of Resolution 23194. I'm an environmental scientist and testifying on my own behalf. I moved to Maui County from my home state of Louisiana after Hurricane Katrina. The aftermath of Katrina shares with the aftermath of these fires, the impacts of having large outside sources of aid coming into a community with a unique culture that is different from the mainstream US culture. We need to make every effort to keep Maui's families on Maui. When families are moved away in order to provide them housing, they may never come back, even if they want to due to the economic challenges of doing so. If we fail in this, it will irreparably change the culture of this place, both the Hawaiian culture and the rich, multi-generational, multi-ethnic culture that makes Maui Maui. So I implore you to do all within your power to keep Maui families here, to keep people who are currently housed, whether they be owners or renters, in their homes and to provide expeditious housing here on Maui for displaced people, even if it's temporary. Make a pathway for local businesses to be part of the response. Not only tourism or lodging or food or construction, but also every kind of service and supplier, including our often overlooked local science and engineering services firms. Firms that are not already engaged in a federal contracting program cannot directly access this economic opportunity. However, the prime federal contractors already in the programs can subcontract to local firms. We will have millions, if not billions of dollars pouring in for this recovery. So please make sure that there is a pathway for Maui businesses and employees to be able to benefit and keep some of that money in our local economy. And lastly, move rapidly to establish resiliency hubs in every Maui County community. Generators and fuel, solar panels, Tesla batteries, water, food, communications, equipment, medical supplies, PPE, cots, bedding can all be stockpiled and ready to go in case of emergency. Having multiple hubs not only ensures that an individual area can be served in the event that they get cut off from other aid, but it also sets up each community to be able to receive evacuees from affected areas.
The people of Maui, my name is Rita Ryan. I am testifying on Bill, Resolution 23-194 as a member of 350hawaii.org, the Maui chapter. I am testing as an individual on Bill 81 and I'm testing as a member of 350hawaii.org on Resolution 23-69. First, I, I want to hold in our hearts all of the victims of this wildfire and make the changes necessary in this community to honor their lives and their, all that were affected. And I want to recognize that this was a climate disaster. There's, there's no other way around defining this. The hurricane was 600 miles offshore, but whipped up enough winds and the drought. Those two conditions led to the fire. There were other things we didn't do right that we're going to learn from and we're going to change and we're going to fix those things because we have more of these disasters to come, unfortunately. I want to support the Maui Resiliency Hub. I know this started a couple of years ago and there was a community input on it, but we really haven't seen anything being developed around that. And I agree with Robin Knox, the previous testifier, that we should accelerate the development of these community resilience hubs. Most of us took to social media sources like Nextdoor to find out what was going on and to inform each other. So we need resilience hub somewhere we can go, a point in each neighborhood where we know the resources can be dispatched from. I want to also remind us about the study that came out after the 2019 wildfires, the, from the cost of government commission on the report of wildfire prevention and cost recover on Maui. There was a really lengthy four-part report. And if you read it, it almost predicted the Lahaina wildfires. We knew what was coming, yet we didn't react in time. We didn't make, we didn't, we weren't proactive knowing what was to come. And here it came. So we need to move fast. We need to move faster. We know these things are coming. We know that floods, we know sea level rise, we know these things are coming. Yet somehow we're waiting for the disaster to tell us that it's really real. Biden said, you know, to build back better yesterday, right? But we can't waive sustainable green building principles. We need low-impact housing that does not contribute to the climate crisis that created this disaster. That $5 billion coming into the community, we want to rebuild without contributing to greenhouse gases, without, you know, worsening the problem. You know, otherwise, we're not being very pono about how we spend this money. Talk about Resolution 23-69, the Housing and Land Use Commission. Item number nine on that resolution, the energy conservation measures, talks about energy, sustainable design and environmental stewardship. This, this feels like greenwashing. Those three things are all different things. Those are not under energy conservation. Sustainable building design, right? It's not just about energy conservation, right? It's about the, the uphill and downhill effects of the materials that you use and the environmental stewardship. It feels like it was all shuttered, shuttled under item number nine to, you know, check, check a box. And I think we need to look a little bit closer about how we build our housing here on Maui sustainably and the total cost of ownership for the residents of those homes. Because it's been proven in California that rebuilding with green, sustainable housing, although it costs a little bit more upfront, it saves the homeowners multiple times that, exponentially times that extra that they pay in their mortgage to operate their homes with the lower utility bills. And also item number 13 on that, about the sirens in, in that new community. You know, and it said, just let's follow state guidelines. Well, we can't stop, follow state guidelines on sirens anymore, can we? Because we see what happened in, in Lahaina. And we need different sirens for different emergency events, you know, one for fire, one for tsunami, one for hurricane, one for whatever. We're, we're, we've got these events coming at us. They're going to come fast and furious. We have to be prepared. So if we're building a new community that just relies on the state's guidelines, we're selling ourselves short there. And I also want to talk about, these are both on the recovery and resilience ground. But some of the things we need to really look at is the toxic waste in Lahaina. And where's that going? Is that going in the groundwater and out to the reefs? Is that going into the, into the central landfill and into the, into the groundwater? We know what happened in 9/11. People that were exposed to toxins and got very, very sick. We can't let that happen here. We have to act now in the recovery efforts to make sure that we're not sickening our environment worse by not paying attention to these things. And I also have my biggest issue on the recovery and resilience issue is point number two. The rules of the council are suspended as necessary. That's scary because we want sunshine laws to permeate everything that the council does. So there's no clarification on that. And I'm, we are asking for clarification on that in that resolution. That what rules of the council are rules of the council? And how, you know, to, to be suspended so that we can act quickly? Yes, we want you to act quickly. Yes, we want to suspend some rules, but all rules.
The next testifier is Tiari Lawrence testifying.
I just want to acknowledge and mahalo council member Tamara Paulin for all of her hard work out in West Maui. I'm so proud to call you my friend and a member of our family and just really proud of your leadership. And mahalo Chair Alice for putting this important item on the agenda. Emergency proclamation, affordable housing, the proclamation. I have a lot of concerns around the sunshine. I would like to see sunshine be amended and implemented back into the emergency proclamation. So if you could pressure the governor to do that, I think that would go a long way. FEMA, the funds, this disaster relief fund has me very concerned because I want to make sure that our local companies have access to securing that large contract. But unfortunately, I'm hearing conversations that they're in negotiation with a mainland contractor. I'm a firm believer that we have the talent and the capability of securing these large contracts. Or perhaps the county should consider the state acquiring the large contract under their emergency proclamation. They, and it would streamline a lot of the work through the emergency proclamation if the state was to secure the contract. So I'm just putting it out there. I can elaborate more. Land use, as many of you guys know, you know, it's, it's poor management surrounding Lahaina that has created a dry, arid desert-like condition. And so I think moving forward with impacts of climate change, we need to hold these large land owners accountable to, one, putting in fire breaks. And two, if it's sown ag, you should be growing, you should be doing agriculture. I can elaborate more on that if you want. But then in terms of housing, you know, there's a lot of talk about rebuilding Lahaina. And this is a conversation that needs to be had with the community, like by the community, for the community. I would just encourage that if the county is, that the county advocate and pressure the powers that be to build housing on already public lands. The county owns acreage near Long Yopoko and outside the border of Lahaina Town, as well as the state up above Waikuli and into La'ali'i area is our lands that could potentially be developed and is owned by the public. And I say this because I just, I hesitate when we're developing housing and using public funds on private lands. And with a private developer, I feel like the county and the state should step to the plate and develop these lands and, and, you know, they're talking about $5 billion coming to, or, you know, over a billion dollars coming to Maui to help with the disaster relief with the, with the initial cleanup, which will be in phases. You know, the talk around the town is that Army Corps is going to be in charge. FEMA is going to have Army Corps take the lead in contracting out a lot of this work. I just concerned that this money will go towards I just concerned that this money will go towards a company on the continent. I can privately talk to you about this and who these companies are that have actually made billions of dollars off of disaster relief. And I'm afraid of them bringing in a lot of people from the continent to come work here on top of already having a housing crisis. We need to ensure that as much of that money is based in Hawaii. 6,000 people are currently unemployed. Prior to the fire, that number was in the 600 to 800 range. And I believe that our, you know, we have businesses here that can do the work. There's already ads being put out there for people that are looking for work and for this disaster relief and offering only $70 an hour. $70 an hour is a slap in our face when you're putting our people in a hazardous condition, like conditions. And then it's what, for a company from the continent to capitalize and make money? No, we need to hire local. We need to ensure that that money remains here in Hawaii and helps our people get by this devastating time. I'm kind of going on a rant, but I think, I think the county should look into the state getting that contract because it already waives, with the emergency proclamation, it already waives the need for procurement and some other environmental policies. So this would be a way that we can streamline some of that. But anyhow, absolutely. I've come in front of this council many of times about Lahaina development. One of the reasons why I was staunchly opposed to development in Oluwalu a while because my family lost their home and it's nearly 20 years ago. And they're still living in a trailer in Oluwalu. But one of the reasons why we didn't want development around in that area is because as long as you have dry brush and you're not doing agriculture, you're all, you're going to continue to create this unsafe environment. And I feel like there needs to be better management. And if the large, large land owner isn't going to pursue agriculture or put, put management policies in place, like fire breaks every so many months, then they have no business owning large, large tracts of land. And so I would like to see the county, council, like I've mentioned many times, implement policies that requires landowners. If you own egg land, you should be doing egg.
First of the council, I first wanted to mahalo our Slippers on the Ground leadership of, of council member Tamara Paulton. You know, Team No Sleep and Red Lightning, our amazing community. Maui Nui and Lahaina Strong really stepped up immediately. But my name is Kainashiki. I am co-executive director of the Maui Nui Resiliency Hui, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization operating in the, in Maui County. And we would like to support Resolution 23-194. Mahalo for introducing this resolution to initiate the critical legislative work this body will be immersed in for the foreseeable future. Each committee's area of focus has heavy lifting ahead to analyze and identify the most impactful ways the county can help our residents now and in the coming years through policymaking and funding. Mahalo for organizing this vital work into a division of tasks by each of the standing committees to most efficiently meet the needs of our survivors. We learned immediately the day after the fires through continuous community-led efforts. There are too many critical areas of focus for any one organization, group, or person to effectively manage all of the time-sensitive needs, mental health, medical, shelter, food, communication, mobility, education. It's all hands on deck and dividing into focus groups has been the most effective course of action. Of course, it goes without saying that it is paramount importance that discussions and decisions are done so with the involvement and guidance of residents from the impacted areas, Lahaina and West Maui. Unfortunately, most of the residents from these areas are still without streaming capabilities or lack resources to participate. We would like to request that concerted outreach, outreach efforts be made along the way during discussions for their involvement and especially before voting. It would be invaluable to the community if the committee meetings pertaining to these topics were held in West Maui at the Lahaina Civic Center or in the ballrooms of the hotels where displaced residents are living. It was good to see council members yesterday, but we would like to invite them to regularly join Slippers on the Ground folks and our council member to get a real feel and understanding. Maui Nui Resiliency Hui would be interested in working with the county to fulfill the Maui Island Plan Goal 3.1. Maui will be disaster resilient by planning and establishing community-led resiliency hubs in each district, beginning with West Maui. And we have already taken steps to set up directly below Kapalua Airport. This location was a huge asset to us during the first week as we partnered with airline pilots to deliver food, water, medical supplies, and technology to enable communication capabilities for our displaced residents. It is collectively understood that our community has a very long road of recovery. The council will play a very important role to aid our community in navigating the devastation that has occurred and affected the trajectory of Maui County forever. We mahalo you for all of the important work that is to come. And we fully support community-led, government-supported efforts. And I just wanted to clarify that in our most recent grant request through two Hawaii Community Foundation, we have included a request for 42 of the Starlinks to Red Lightning as we have been partnering with them to address the immediate need of providing communication technology to West Maui to assist in the basic thing of the next day, trying to find whether people were alive or dead and communication with families. And now moving into people's need to put in applications and also advocate for the county to set up a place in West Maui to address all of the unemployment claims. Some people cannot get their unemployment claims filed. So it'd be wonderful if you could set up there.
She'll be followed by Junior Nikoa.
I get some statements by Brother Zane Schweitzer, who was key on the communication for all of distribution hubs that we had here in Lahaina. So I'm going to read what he said. "West Maui is in need for West Side Location Emergency Operations Center." Right now, you have Waney Wailuku. He's saying, "West Maui is in need of an emergency disaster relief alliance or a high-risk community liaison. Maokatumakai preparedness hui. A group like our leaders in Kahana, Lapili, and Upper West Maui, who have stepped up with the preparedness hazard assessments and organizations to bring calm to our community during this time when action was required." Yeah. He also went and said that is most importantly, we are on the same page as a community with our goals for our Lahaina and our new Upper West Maui community, along with the school. Families need the security, knowing their short-term and long-term plans in place for safe learning and our displaced Kamahaina. Mahalenui, you guys, sorry he couldn't make it. We also had Blake, I don't know his last name over here, but they're out there putting crosses at Lahaina Luna, up Lahaina Luna for all the people that was, went past. So everybody busy still yet and all that kind of stuff. Mahalo Tamara Paulton, Gianni Rollings for being on the ground with us too. Molokai came in strong and hard in the very first day that we called out, called out to everybody for bringing supplies. We had this, everybody know about it now. Kahana Boat Ramp was key to receiving all of these supplies from Molokai the first day. Lanai. After that, a couple of days later, I came in from Honolulu. But I was on 10 and a half hour trip to this rough water. Oh my God. But all this time, we've been having at least 18 trips from, from Honolulu. And these captains is crazy. They, they, one of them did five trips. One out, one out of Wahini, one other trip she did them by herself. And we told her, she's not doing that anymore. So we make sure we get somebody on the boat with her to get these supplies over here. And I'm going to tell you guys this, when all of this, when all of us guys putting this together, yeah? It was because we couldn't get supplies from the outside of Maui. You know, with all the checkpoints and the EOC. I had that number, you know, nobody come in, communicated with me. I called Mayor Bissett. I get his cell phone number, hima kazi. And I told him, I said, Honolulu, I'm coming to, I'm coming to West Maui. I like one of those satellite phones. I like do something because I, I was in communication. Even though I was in Honolulu, I was in communication with Boat Ramp because they had little bit service with S turns because only, because had little bit service. So with the minimal amount of service and connectivity, we still made it happen, but it would have been way better if we could be part, like I know a couple of people said, they can be part of the EOC. And, you know, we have a communication. Us guys is the guys who live here and know what's going on and make things happen. You guys never use us. We had to do it all on our own. Thanks to the leadership of Tamara, Kipo, Wela, Alika, Ya'chira Lamlam. Oh, bruh, I can just go on and go on and go on and go on. But we did this, yeah? We had to do this. We had to do this. Yeah, because there's no other way to get supply. And early part, the Red Lightning guys, yes, everybody out there. Red Lightning, not Red Cross. Red Lightning, not Red Cross. They went hit the ground running. Came over here, no questions asked. Fun that team, that sky league team. And then, hey, we gonna raise his money for him and take his support or some more, some more. So Red Lightning, not Red Cross. But you know what? You know, like Kihei Ice, they gave us plenty ice, you know? You get all these guys cooking for us, the hot food. We still get plenty stuff that is stored here just for the next thing yet to come. But I know that everybody is talking about this housing. Paul Chang was on this baka earlier. Paul Chang said, I called him that, as soon as I landed here in Maui. And he said, Junior, you can use Bay Street for now within, because he not going to use it for like three to four years. So use that as a temporary emergency hub. And again, it's a, it's a SIPs program that I've been, that I'm bringing to the attention of a couple of you council members in this, in this chamber. Okay, I bring them to Mayor Bissett about this SIPs program. I bring them to Public Works. I bring them to the Planning Department. I bring them to the Housing Department. I took all, every single avenue to get this to build cheap, not cheap, but affordable homes that's quality. Hurricane-proof winds up to 150 miles. Fire retardant, because I don't, I don't, I don't say for safe fireproof because we just see what would happen. Baka went metal, melt metal. So I'm not going, I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that. You know, baka termite-proof, environmentally safe. Pono, he works in the administration, the marriage administrator. He had another brother was inside this meeting when we had with the housing. He said he did this. He did, he used this product. And when they put up the 20 homes, after another storm, the only that 20 homes was standing, standing strong. So I plead, I plead to you guys. Get all the departments that I just said, stay out of our way. Help, you guys, help me get these homes built, especially the temporary ones. Okay? Help me get, make things happen. I told, I said, I told this, I told this to Governor Green. I told this to the, what's the other dummy? Chase. I told a guy Chase. I told, yeah, all those guys, I told them straight, help us, help our people. Don't get in the way. Take off all the red tape. Okay, all these other million-dollar guys, they get. Yeah, we talking about the FEMA bringing up mainland contractors. Release the red tape for us local people. When, and this product that I'm bringing, I want to bring a manufacturing seller here in Lahaina and we can manufacture this product. Put some more people to work. Put some more people to work. So help me and help Tamara. Help us and the leaders of Lahaina make, I'm sorry, I'm going to swear a little bit. Make shit happen. Okay? I tell you guys right now, it's a passion of guys. All we like to do is fight, fight, fight. But just don't get in the way. No getting away. Make, make shit happen. Peace out. Everybody be safe.
The next testifier is Megan Pearl, testifying on.
Appreciate Uncle Junior's mentioned words there. I resonate with them very much so. Anyway, thank you all for allowing this public forum to take place today. I have a couple concerns regarding Resolution 23-194. Number one is related to something I saw then Senator Shatz mentioned earlier in a news article. And I'm wondering what the county officials are doing to help with this. But obviously, the next step that we're at is the debris removal in Lahaina and the affected areas, which is an extraordinary, expensive and time-consuming project. And we need to have the federal government take the lead on that with the Environmental Protection Agency to make sure it's cleaned up properly, as Rita Ryan mentioned previously. There are a number of contaminants and concerns in that debris. And the state can pick any 30-day period within the next 120 days in which the federal government will pick up 100% of the cost. What is the council and the county officials doing to work with the higher-up leadership in the state to request this federal assistance? Because there is a timeframe which this needs to be implemented and requested within. My concern is that if the council and county and state officials do not request this, then who picks up the cost for this cleanup process, which is going to be extremely, you know, high cost? And I don't want that to fall on the people of Hawaii in any sort of taxpayer ways. So I would urge all of you to get to work with the higher-up officials, Shatz and Maisy, Governor Green. Obviously, Mayor Business should be heavily involved in this request and escalating that as well. But there is a very strict timeline on this and that needs to be adhered to. My second concern is what is being done to protect the ancestral burial grounds at Waola Church? As obviously, we all know that those are extremely important burial grounds and that those were not affected by the fire. The church obviously was heavily damaged, but the burial grounds are there and they need to be protected. We know that we have a number of our previous kings, queens buried there from the early times of the Hawaiian Kingdom. And I've not gotten any straight answers from the governor or anybody else as to what is being done to protect that burial ground. My third concern, I'm sorry. My third concern is in regards to the restaurant industry that I directly work in with a number of our restaurants over in Lahaina. And they've all been trying to get their unemployment. They filed immediately, pretty much day one, they filed. And they should be filing for day, or excuse me, for week two at this point, but they haven't even gotten paid or any sort of confirmation for week one. So what are we doing and what is the council and county going to be doing to fast-track the unemployment benefits for all these affected individuals? Because if you haven't noticed, not only are we having restaurants closed because we have no business at this point coming in due to some pretty irresponsible social media posts that went viral, but now we have an economic issue here where we are having folks that are needing to file for unemployment. And it doesn't seem that the state is following up with that in an expeditious way. So those would be my three points of concern.
My name is John Darian. I'm part of the West Maui population. The fire started about quarter mile from me. I lost my office building in town and a family property in town. And it compelled me to go visit all the distribution centers. And I ended up wanting to hang around over in the Peely Park with the family, the Kekona family that I, that I know. So I get up in the morning and I go out there and I'm going to read you my notes because I'm, we're, I'm right in the middle of it. My, my, my son took. My uh, my, my son took in, I think, six or eight families. We had first responders at our house. We're feeding everyone lots of supplies coming in from the Farmers Association. Uh, Junior, thank you, Zane Solid, uh, I'll read you my notes. That we, we really do uh need to protect our land. And that was my primary focus, is I've taken every uh, every affected property in the four, five and four of six T M Ks zone. And I, as we speak, I'm entering it into a contact management program to identify each of the tenants and the landlords, the property owners, and give them help as, as is necessary. Uh, it would be very helpful to have assess and on West Maui to the decision makers. And I thank you guys for being there. Come in, see it firsthand, spend enough time, sit with us for a minute, understand what Tamara is doing. She's facilitated stuff that is tremendous job. I speak to the people, I'm in there every day, the folks coming in. And I want you to know, there's families hiding. There, there's families hiding in Napele and Kahana and Hanukahai that won't take help. That they come in, they finally after a couple of days took some twinkies. And now after what, two weeks, they're taking some coming one person to get some groceries. But they lost their families, they lost their homes, they lost their will to live. Trying to get the kids out of there and get them to the soccer field. Give me a second. They get, the kids come in with a howl look in their eyes. They get on the soccer field with the, with the youth counselor, uh Zed from the uh Kumulani Chapel, he takes twenty five, fifty of them. They come back, look at their moms and their dads with twinkles in their eyes and you can measure the healing. And it's fabulous to see and be part of. And we need, I'm going into the community, I'm gonna break though, I'm gonna pull those kids out of there. We have, we, I've ordered Starlink, I have Starlink myself and coming, like the community come, come here. Bless your hearts, Red Lightning, we love you, we will help support you, but we don't need you. We don't really need anything other than the local community respectfully, John Skandarian. We're out in Napele and there, the community is, is kicking butt.
Warnings, the tears are gonna come, so. Um, my name is Jen Mather and I am currently a resident of Kahului. Um, I'm gonna read off this paper, cause I'm gonna cry. Uh, but my heart is buried in the ashes, I don't need your tissues, I'm good, thank, thank you. Buried in, buried in the ashes of um Maluulu Olele and more specifically, uh Waola Church. Um, I'm testifying on resolution twenty three dash one nine four. Um, specifically the reference to developing a comprehensive recovery and resilience plan. And I understand the intent and I uh, I uh appreciate it. Um, and I commend the council for wishing um to move quickly to help recovery efforts through legislation and resolutions. I would like to caution, just like everybody else said before, way better than I'm capable of, um, that our people are still grieving. Um, and any steps you take now without the full force of the community um here to voice their needs, their wants and their opinions, um would be a further injustice and inflict further wounds on an already traumatized community. I'm not even sure when they'll be ready. Like I'm, no Tiare and Kai and other people are like, let's do it. And they also cautioned, like, let's maybe, like, I know Holoimua, right? We gotta go forward, we gotta go from here. But sometimes we gotta freaking weigh anchor too and just like stop for a moment, right? Hele uma, so that we can process all of this. You know, cause we're in super sensitive and challenging times and people are gonna be ready at different times. And I don't know when I'll ever be ready. And to the testifier up there who asked, what's going on with Waineke Church, right? Waineke Cemetery, that's private, that's a private cemetery. If you wanna help us, donate to us. Where were you, why were you asking the questions now? When our committee over there slaves away in that church and in that cemetery on Saturdays. Old people in the sun, no money, help us now, come now. You want answers, meet us down there when it opens. Oh, I went off script, so sorry. Um, so I just wanna say, like, weigh anchor, pause, pump the brakes a little bit. Yes, get your committees ready, get your S M E, your um subject matter experts in line. Get all your resources together, come into the community, ask us what we need, right? And then move forward with those who are ready to do so. Uh, and then in closing, I wanna just, I wanna mahalo those of you who have been like in the thick of it with us in the response. Um, Councilmember Paulton, super rock solid. She is like Tita and she always has been, and I will finish up, I promise I'll just stick to the script. She's been handling like a champion through two weeks of community organized efforts. Councilmember Rollins Fernandez, she's been escorting us in donations, containers into Lahaina, swimming from boats to get to us. Um, any of you who I've personally not seen, but you've been out there in response, mahalo to you. Uh, I see this, what you're doing right now is another opportunity to assist us. I just want you to pause, give us a little more time to organize. Um, and then, like, cause we've super organized as a community through all of this. And then recovery is gonna take a long time, but it's gonna take a whole heck of a lot of thought too. So mahalo to you.
Next testifier is Colleen Rosinski testifying on.
Thank you, everybody, thank you. Um, there's so much to say and I don't know how you all are processing the words because it's just too much. For the past hundred years, I was with my ninety seven year old friend Seal McDonald from Westside yesterday. And she's overloaded, so we're just trying to downregulate her. And um, one of my friends that teaches at Maui High said, we um have come out of colonialism and capitalism. And I, I really took me back. And then to simplify, to come back out of that, I look at environment and sustainability. And, and I know with Molakai, Lanai, um, Hana and Westside has a lot of more impact with non-environment, with changes. And the, so then I'm processing that little, that little sticker that says, he is greater than I. Well, I'm not particularly Christian, but that resonates, it's simple. And I'm thinking, environment, sustainability, greater than colonialism and capitalism. I just sat there and came up with that today, sorry. My mind is just taking in like all of you and I don't know how you're gonna sort through it. Everybody's doing whatever they can. And I really appreciate all of your energy. And, but remember, everybody breathe. Do your downregulation, drink and eat consciously. Because we all have to sustain ourselves first. Please sustain yourselves so that you can grow and make this all come together. Because we need all of you, all of us, to make it work. My husband's gonna be mad at me because I didn't say what he wanted for business, but it'll come.
Next testifier is Foster Ampong testifying on.
I'm testifying on resolution twenty three, one ninety four. The planning for the recovery and resiliency, um plan for Lahaina. Let me begin by first saying that I'm from Lahaina, born and raised. My family, my parents, my grandparents, my great grandparents, my great great grandparents, along with many other parents from the Philippines, from Japan, from Portugal, from all these different countries that came into Maui and worked in the plantation for generations, helped to build Lahaina. As you know, I have been a very passionate advocate of Maikana Kamali heritage. I'm native Hawaii. My family in Lahaina goes back sixteen generations plus. But I say sixteen generations because I can trace my genealogy on paper as well as orally and further back. But I say that to give you context that Lahaina is such a special place as we all know. I've seen the photos, I've seen the drone footages of my family's home that was destroyed. I took in family members on that night. Fortunately, they were able to escape the inferno and make it to my house and they've been there with me. Many other of my cousins and my relatives also made it out of that inferno. Unfortunately, a few of them had to fly out and move to Oregon, California, Nevada because we had no more room on the island to take them in. They wanna come home. And I'm here speaking on behalf of my family from Lahaina, the Kimokeo, the Ampongs, the Hossis, the Archangels. And they asked me to take the lead and to make sure that as we move forward in developing this plan of recovery and resiliency, that their thoughts and their hearts are heard and that they're not excluded. If we're gonna say that we're gonna be all inclusive in this planning and developing this, then let's include everybody, which means Lahaina is not just Mokuula. Lahaina is just not Hawaiian. And I'm glad to take on anybody that wants to challenge me on this. I am a recognized descendant of Ivi Kupuna from Mokuula as well as a linear, recognized leaning descendant of my ancestral lands and ancestors that are buried in these areas that were burned down. And that's gonna be one of my kulianas when we're permitted to go in, is to go in and assess and make sure that our family's ancestral lands, our family's ancestral burials are still intact.
I mean, I understand what you're saying about including those who are not here and also those who have come here, um, who are not Kanakamali. So would you be representing your family in, on the mainland right now to be able to participate in whatever might be ongoing?
Yes, I've been in constant contact with them. And as you know, I try to as much as possible before I make a public comment to make sure I do my homework and, and do my fact checking. And so, yes, I have their blessing. And, and also I'd like to, to, to say that um, many of them wanted to be here for this meeting. But a lot of them just the puwai, you know, they're, they're, it's not easy, yeah.
And so for those other ethnic groups who have arrived after, how would you suggest that we connect with them?
Well, you, you know, I mean, as each council member, you have districts and I'm sure you have the resources. Like in my family, and, and I'm, I'm using them as an example because I, I like to use my experience and not, you know, refer to books or some studies that other people did for some other family. My father is second generation Filipino, you know? His father is from Bohol, from the, from the island of Bohol in, in Visaya. I know my genealogy all the way back to that island. And that goes back to Magellan's type. And then on my grandmother's side, which is Puerto Rican, that goes back to Kakau. That's one of the provinces in the southwestern regions of the Puerto Rican island. And then, of course, there's my mother, she's Hawaiian. And as I said, you know, we go back generations. So to answer your question, Councilmember Kama, um, I, I guess just gotta ask, you know, I mean, I have family members on Lahaina Luna Road that lost their home and they, they come from my Puerto Rican side, you know? And so I'll be reaching out to them also and maybe doing, you know, the networking. I hope that's.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair. Any more questions or just Foster, thanks for coming today. As you know, this is our very first meeting and it will, this item will be sent to Member Uuhajin's committee to work out the um priorities over weeks of time. And then all of the priorities go into committees, so then the committees start the work. So we realize that this is early and that people have very, some people are reluctant to start thinking about the plans for the future. But um, we're taking this as slow as we possibly can and in a way that's going to involve as many people as we can. So if you are in ta, in contact with others in your family, please let us know because we, we need to hear from everybody. And we know that communications is not fully up yet.
Can, can I say something since you, you mentioned um Councilmember Uuhajin's committee?
Right.
So I was fortunate enough and to be part of her working group that worked out the cultural overlay map.
Hmm.
And I really, she might not like this, but I, I really want to say this sincerely. How she, how she organized the meetings, how she ran the meetings and it was all inclusive and it was very transparent, that had to be one of the best working groups I ever, ever worked with. Everybody, everything was positive. We worked on the issues, we had differences, you know, but we never beat up each other. And the food was good, I mean, she knew how to bring us back. So I'm glad that you, you, right on, thank you.
Yeah, we, we made her, we chose her on purpose.
The next is Faith Chase, I do not know.
Thank you so much for um muscling through and having this meeting because I feel like a lot of people have been trying to get answers and have been calling to no avail. And this is obviously a central point and a portal for people to um ask and address things that um are bothering them and things that hurt. Um, I appreciate you all. I am gonna speak specifically to the comprehensive recovery and resilience, resiliency plan. Thank you for um elaborating with the previous testifier, I needed that information. Um, I would like to request, um, I'm requesting now that um Johnson and um Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Kama um create a dual referral for items that are specific to uh environmental management, specifically to the landfill. Um, I got to get a little bit of listening ear of Councilmember Kama a couple of weeks ago. But at this point, as we try to, as we look at ways that we can build safe places for families, we need to, we need to recover every resource that we have. And that is specific to something in lines with uh Councilmember Shane Sinensi wanting to do a transfer station in Hana. But we need to do that in a larger way in central Maui. Not one piece of good material for building needs to be wasted. So I will be following up in Uuhajin's committee and asking that of my other two council members and.
Thank you Chair, my name is Sterling Higa and I live in Haiku with my wife and four children. I'm testifying on behalf of Housing Hawaii's Future in my role as Executive Director in support of resolution twenty three dash one nine four. Um, Chair, council members, fellow citizens, you know this, an unprecedented crisis faces our county. Hundreds dead or missing, thousands displaced, and though the fires are contained, an economic tsunami is coming. Now, the county faces a precipitous drop in property tax revenue. Its bond rating may suffer and the cost of borrowing may, may increase. And the county potentially faces billions of dollars in liability. That means fewer resources to help thousands of families that need assistance. It means less money to build the affordable housing they desperately need. At the same time, the state's finances will also suffer with impacts to the general excise tax, the transient accommodations tax and income taxes. Thousands of Maui residents and other business owners lose their jobs. Potentially, this disaster is going to slide our state into recession. Now, hopefully, President Biden and the federal government make good on their promise to assist with the recovery. But rest assured, it does not matter how much money we throw at this problem. If we keep the current set of exclusionary zoning laws on the books, local families, native Hawaiian families will continue to leave Maui as refugees, as exiles. Hawaiian families, will continue to leave Maui as refugees, as exiles. Maui's exclusionary zoning policies are rooted in racism and explicitly designed to make housing unaffordable. Minimum lot sizes, minimum parking requirements, limits on accessory dwelling units, these policies were working exactly as designed before the fires, making housing unaffordable for working families. And unless this council takes action and reforms these exclusionary zoning laws, among others, Maui will become more and more unaffordable. In the wake of this disaster, we need to ensure that the survivors have affordable housing, and we need to make good on the promise to the citizens of Maui County that all residents will have affordable housing. We cannot afford to wait. We cannot say no can. We need change now. Housing Hawaii's Future, the organization I help lead, stands ready alongside other local groups like the Hawaii Zoning Atlas, Hawaii MB, to provide and help council with possible solutions to our affordable housing shortage. And we're counting on you and your leadership. And know that you are not alone. Please, be well, stay strong, and let's work together to make sure that all of our people have affordable housing.
The next testifier is Anne Marie Mabit.
First, I want to express my condolences to everyone who has lost loved ones in the fires. I also want to thank all the first responders who risked their lives to protect the people of Maui. And I want to thank every single resident who has taken the time to testify at the meeting today. And I want to preface my comments by saying they are given in the spirit of improving things moving forward. Longstanding drought conditions combined with extremely high winds and especially flammable non-native grasses should produce firestorms in Lahaina and up country on August 8th. But it is the failure of local officials to adequately prepare for and manage the disaster that led to so much loss and devastation. Information and responsibilities were ignored. The Maui County Hazard Mitigation Plan, a 1,044-page document released in August 2020, provided local officials with extensive information regarding Maui's wildfire dangers. In terms of wildfire probabilities, West Maui is the only community planning area described as highly likely, with a greater than 90% annual chance of wildfire. The plan also notes West Maui's particular challenges in the area of evacuation messaging. There are no critical communication facilities in West Maui. 9.8%, 8.5% of the households have no internet. 2.19% of households have no telephone service. And 5.89% of households speak English not well or not at all. In addition to the West Maui's extremely limited evacuation routes, the plan notes West Maui has the highest score for access to lifelines vulnerability, having the second highest rate of population without health insurance, over 6%, and the second highest rate of households without a vehicle, at nearly 7%. State law, specifically HRS Section 127A passed in 2014, empowers the governor and the mayor with direct responsibility for emergency management plans, including preparations and mitigation efforts, and direct responsibility for emergency management operations during a disaster, including the power to issue an emergency declaration, direct and control alerts, warnings, and notifications and the systems by which they are generated, direct and control the flow of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and order the shutting off of water mains, gas mains, and electric power connections. HRS Section 127A-5 also requires the county council to pass ordinance to, quote, "ensure that the mayor and the county's emergency management agency have the powers necessary to receive state and federal funds and carry out the functions of this chapter at the county level." But it appears Maui County has only one emergency management ordinance, a one-sentence law passed in 1980 that established the Civil Defense Agency. It is Maui County Code Section 2.12.150. Resources were also squandered. MEMA received an $8 million FEMA grant for hazard mitigation in fiscal year 2022.
Three minutes.
Yet, on the county's emergency alert website, mausirens.com, there is not one word informing the public as to what to do in the case of a wildfire, flood, mudslide, or any other disaster other than a tsunami. In short, despite abundant information, resources, and experience, including the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan, an $8 million FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, and the 2018 Hurricane Lane Lahaina Fires, local officials fared to adequately prepare the community for this disaster. The people of Maui deserve better.
My name is Leon McLaughlin from the Clean Water Foundation in Washington, and our organization would like to talk about schools, schoolteachers' homes that we will be donating water units to. And if you have any schools that you can give us the list, we would like to donate water units to those schools, have the children bring the water home where they don't have to pay for water, and this water would be free. So we are donating water units to schools and schoolteachers' homes. Our website is www.cleannewaterfoundationwa.org. And any schools that you may know that may need these water units, we will donate water units to these schools, teach the kids to be goodwill ambassadors, to bring the water units home to their families and communities. And we will also do fundraising to donate water units to the schoolteachers' homes that's teaching in those schools.
Thank you for this and for working with my colleague, Member Sugimura. I would just ask that you also coordinate with the Department of Health for West Maui. Some of the water systems are under even low boil as well as, I think, up country. And so there are very toxic chemicals, you know, when the medical facilities burnt down, when the transformers burnt down, all the cars. And just to ensure that the filtration systems that you are donating will filter those types of things that are not even able to be boiled out of the water. You know, I've heard that there's arsenic, lead, asbestos, diphoret, benzene, and all these chemicals that we're not sure that can, how it can be filtered out of the water.
That would be great, because we have certain filters that we design that take out viruses, contaminants, and also pharmaceuticals. We've been working with groups like World Vision, the Peace Corps for over 20 years. So we know exactly what you're talking about. We'll take a water sample, and we will design special filters that take those contaminants out.
My name is Shannon Ee, testifying on Resolution 23-194. I came here to listen with no intention to speak. I, as well as my Ohana, are survivors of the Lahaina Fire that happened on 8/8. I left my house with just the clothes on my back. Although my Ohana and I lost our house in the fire, our Lahaina hometown is and will always be there. My Kupuna and their spirit continue to surround us there. I feel as a Kanaka and 10th-generation Mo'o of the Lahaina community, it was important to come up and share my manao as someone directly affected. First and foremost, mahalo to all of the community members who have been and continue to work tirelessly to help our kaia'ulu. I ask that you, as our community leaders, make decisions through work and not talk. Work with the ones in the community. We can easily sit here and talk about making decisions and fast-track this or that because there is a need, but we are connecting to the, but you are connected to the people and places and spaces that you represent. I have seen our Lahaina representative, Tamar Paltin, and Kiani Rollins, Molokai rep, working day in and day out, but they need help. We need help. As a council, you work as a whole, you're a va'a that need each other, each member to move. We need help in Lahaina. We need all the support we can get. We need water to live, and unfortunately, most of the water is privately owned in our town of Lahaina. You need to hold a meeting out in Lahaina so that the voices, the voices of the people directly affected are heard. Unfortunately, many of our community members have no hope in the decisions of our people and leadership in what they're, in the decisions they are making. We need to rebuild the people first, rebuild that hope by showing action and not just talking. We deserve for you to sit at our table and not for us to come and sit at yours. We have nothing left but our hometown in Lahaina, its memories and our pride. If you don't know the history, most especially, if you don't know the history of Lahaina, I urge you to research that and see how momona or la'sha'aina was, how Mokuula was the home of our ali'i, how Mokuheino. This fishbowl surrounding it was the home of Kiha'ahine. In order to make decisions, you need to know our home. There's so much going on that personally, as a victim, it takes a lot to get through one task in a day. Knowing that people are making decisions for us is hard, because although some may be in our best interest about communities, others may not. At the moment, we're just looking at how fast we can build, but we need to build up our people. And I'm just looking to survive at this point.
The next testifier is Naki Pukipala, testifying on Resolution.
All councilmembers, I was very affected by the testimony of my resident. I come before you today because, oh, sorry. My family was, they evacuated, they are safe. Under a corner, poor, but many of our loved ones are not. And I wanted to come here today because there is a lot of things that are going to need to be adjusted, so I wanted to speak about in regards to 23-194. And then the help that needs to get to our people. If anything should happen again, I do ask, because I was at the shelters on the first night, and then we wanted to get out to our people, and the roads were closed. People could not get food, they could not get medicine for two to three days. We're not going to wait for Red Cross to go and get our people. We will get our own. I understand that there's emergency things that need to happen, but if any way possible for future things, if a group can be made to have vetted people in that group, so they don't have to say, can I please get to my family? Can I please get to my friends' parents that I don't live on the island? Can you get to them? Can a group be made so that the people in this group are vetted, just in case if emergency crews have to take care of the fires or whatever is going on? There's a group that can bypass all of that and can get into our people. I ask that for the future. I ask right now, because right now, we're mortgage moratorium. I've called, I called the governor's office, the lieutenant governor's office, Brian Chass's office. I know that we can do that, but right now, I'm asking for a moratorium, or if we can push for that. People are still grieving, they're in shock, they don't even know how to fill out paperwork. Oh, please, can you go online and get your numbers? They don't know how to do that. They didn't even, they don't have access, they don't have internet. Half of those people, when they had to go get help, they evacuated, but they didn't know we have hubs at the Haina Gateway or in the PB. What are they going to do? Walk 30 minutes for, to get there? If there could be somebody to go in there to, at least even on a Blair speaker, we're coming, something. But for the moratorium, I'm asking for that, just so people can have a break to figure out what they do and assess a little bit. They're not in the mind frame to be able to have to think, how do I call my insurance? They can't even get through. And if we can have somebody to do that, and then ask if you guys can push for communication between agencies. I have community members that have been calling me.
Three minutes.
Thank you. They've been calling me really quickly, and they're getting help from FEMA, they're getting help from other places, but they're being denied because the agencies are not talking to each other.
My name is Autumn Ness. I am not speaking in my capacity as an aide for Councilmember Johnson at this moment. I'm also not a Lahaina resident, so me speaking here is a little bit uncomfortable, but I'm just going to have to do it. I was in a lot of meetings in the first few days after this disaster where people are talking about Lahaina folks without them in the room, and it felt really gross. So I just, I couldn't handle it. So I went west side where I knew folks were operating, and I've been there almost every day since. And so because I can be in this space and I'm not over there, I feel compelled to pass things on that I don't feel are being understood. First, I hear some people talk about it, but I don't know if you folks are digesting it. Folks are still inactive mourning, literally trying to stay alive. And in that is a collective rage. And I don't say that lightly. There is a collective rage that a lot of this feels like a setup. A lot of this feels like, I'm not talking conspiracy theory, like somebody went and lit the fire. I'm talking about this is the result of a decades and generations-long conversation that West Maui has had with people in charge that this is going to happen, between Miko and the power lines and the fire response, and the water department not communicating to people that there is a problem with their water properly, between the sirens not going up off. People are pissed, and it's justifiable. And in the face of all of that, these resident, these resilience hubs, whatever you want to call them, these Ohana hubs have been established quickly because of the relationships of the ties in West Maui and outside of West Maui that are beyond government and agencies. And the feeling, the palpable feeling in the couple of days after this disaster that we are on our own, we have, nobody is coming to save us. We've been asking for help for decades, and nobody's coming to save us. And so now we're going to feed in water and medicine ourselves. And now, a few weeks in, agencies and government people are starting to come in and be like, we have the answer, and we have these protocols that you have to follow, and here's our policies. And people are like, get lost. Why would I trust you after you put our town in this position? And after you left us for dead? And now you come in and you tell us how to do things? It's insulting. I'm not even from there, and I'm shaking with anger because I see it happen every day, and I just cannot handle. It's really hard to trust the agencies that put you in this very position to get you out of it. The same people that made the decision for about water and electric and egress and in getting in and out of Lahaina, that trapped all these people are now the ones that are being asked to be trusted to build the solution. The other thing, if you're going to get aid, you have to have a FEMA ID. Nobody is going to trust FEMA right now. So we have to establish something outside of FEMA that allows people to be verified of their need and get response. I have to do one more, say one more thing, I'm so sorry. The other big thing is our pace does not match the urgency of the situation. The urgency of the situation in the beginning was gasoline, water, food, and everybody was so slow. And now, all of a sudden, people are talking about rebuilding, like that's the most urgent thing. The most urgent thing right now is getting people in some kind of shelter where they know they're going to be there for a year. That's not going to be a home that's built on vacant county land. That could be, the urgency right now should be clearing out Airbnbs and non-essential units for people to live and catch a breath and mourn with their family, so that in six months or a year from now, they can digest the conversation about what do we do next? The urgency about having this rebuild conversation while people still don't have roofs over their heads, they have 30-day vouchers for their Airbnb, and they don't know where they're going to be in a month. That's urgent. People don't even have the space to talk about rebuilding, because they don't know where they're going to be in two weeks. So this rebuilding needs to just hang on for a minute, and urgently, this county can clear out things that are made for visitors and house people there and the economy all around tourism on the west side. People should be paid those same good jobs to care for their own community at this point. And then we can talk about rebuilding.
My name is Amaral Kraus, and I come to you to testify on Bill 23-194. I'd like to say to my family and all Lahaina, ka'u'au'i, ame ka'u'aloha, i ka'u'ohana, ai au Lahaina. My heart and love goes out to you, my Lahaina community and family. I would like to first extend a world of thanks to the firefighters, some who lost their own homes and family, putting fires out for the community. I'd like to thank our mayor, our governor, the President of the United States. I'd like to thank and send my love and aloha out to Councilmember Tamar Paltin. I'd like to also send my aloha out to the managers of the hotels, the two hotels that I broker, Anka'ana Kalikapalu'a, where they work endlessly in housing our employees who were misplaced by the fire, some of them losing family members to this fire. Where these managers and our staff work diligently shuttling these individuals to different locations where FEMA is, having people with them to sit with them, helping them to fit. helping them to fill out the documents that they need to. I would like to thank every community member that I had the blessed opportunity to meet while volunteering, feeding their local people who were flying out of the Kahului Airport, feeding them, giving pillows, giving toiletries, and just giving them aloha and love to the many firemen who brought the food to the airport so that we may be able to feed all of those that needed to leave Maui, be it local, be it visitors. Thank you. I would like to also know that my family, when they first migrated from Portugal, migrated to Lahaina and we lost a two-hundred-fifty-year-old home that had been there for many, many years and a lot of the history that went with it. Through the grace of Heavenly Father, no one was injured. No one was there. I would like to thank the many churches who reached out, housed, fed our community out there.
Three minutes.
Thank you. I would also like for our community to know that we hear you. It is your community and we know that it is your privilege, your honor, and your right to rebuild your community and have a say in everything that's done in it. I also ask you, council, to be sure, be sure to follow the mayor's lead in not letting investors in, in not letting permitting in that area. Our families in that community are literally in shock. They're alone. They're trying desperately to fathom what has happened. We have lost basically everything in Lahaina and everything it was from the ancestral grounds to the local families that worked and raised generations upon generations of families. Thank you, council members. And I do know that there is not one of you who sit behind the podium or those chairs that do not feel the hurt that we all feel, especially those of you that born and raised here and know that we Maui, we Havai'i, we stick together and we do what needs to be done without being asked. Thanks for the many, many volunteers. I appreciate all of you and look forward to the rebuilding or at least the housing and some normality to the families of Lahaina.
I'm Shaychan Hodges and I am testifying on twenty-three-dash-one-ninety-four. I'm very glad that Justin Huey and Tiare Lawrence brought up the governor's emergency housing proclamation that suspends the following when related to emergency housing: county general plans and sustainability plans, sunshine laws, requests for government records, beach access requirements, environmental impact statements, school impact fees, historic preservation, public procurement code, county zoning laws, and collective bargaining agreements requiring prevailing wages. Tiare raised in particular the sunshine law as it relates to Lahaina, which of course is extremely important since the West Side community has limited access to so much, whether transportation, communication, and of course, personal bandwidths. I'm really happy that Kainisheki brought up the importance of proactively conducting democracy in Lahaina. Given Kai and Tiare's testimonies, I'm surprised that the governor's proclamation is not mentioned in Resolution twenty-three-dash-one-ninety-four. Since the brief resolution is about recovery and resilience and since housing is going to be key to the West Side's recovery, I think it's very important that this body addresses how the resolution's suspension of so many laws will impact the security and safety and democracy of our whole island. I've sent many of you satellite images of how dry the entire county is. Resilience is needed for every community in this county because everyone faces similar risks. As Tiare discussed, there are many seeking to profit off this tragedy. Without the protections currently suspended by the governor, it will be much harder to push back against those forces. And I think we need to remember that the governor's proclamation covers the whole state. Speculators will not just be looking to take advantage of West Side residents. They will be using this extremely acute need for housing combined with the health and environmental hazards on the west side of the island to push for more housing throughout Maui County. And the proclamation will allow them to bypass any laws that you folks make. For example, Tiare also stated that she believes that all ag landowners should be required to use land for agriculture. What if it is no longer ag land? What if Mahipono, for example, decides that they want to take advantage of the need for housing? If you don't act to push back the governor's proclamation, a Canadian pension fund that owns forty thousand acres of land in central and up-country Maui could become the biggest housing developer. I know you have a lot to deal with and I'm so grateful for everyone who testified and for all the issues that were raised. And I know this is extremely difficult, but I really strongly urge you to amend the resolution to include actively addressing how the governor's proclamation reduces your power and democracy for all of our citizens.
And people of Maui, my name is Rodney Kim, calling in from Oahu. And we are a construction company, a four-generation construction company here on the islands. And we are in the process of doing affordable housing projects here. We build probably, we're like one of the top three in the state on residential construction. And so we are in the process of working with modular custom-built homes in Australia from a company in Australia and New Zealand. And so we just so happen to have this program or this process that was going and getting units, homes built. And we have forty-six homes built that's ready to come over here that we can be, that can be built and completed in forty-five days. We can bring them to Maui and we were looking to see who we can approach to, to get it there. We spoke with the governor's office yesterday with Nani Maderas, with the Housing Commissioner. We spoke also with Senator Chang for the Housing Committee in the Senate. And this is basically where we're at. We're trying to figure out how we can get these homes to Maui. They're permanent homes that can be used temporary for temporary housing, but can also be repurposed as for affordable housing or affordable rental units for the county.
Hello, my name is Christine Borg. I guess you could say I'm a Kapuna, so I'm sixty-one. I was living on One H Street when it happened. I walked away with nothing except my dog. And I've been part of the human experience experiment ever since. First, you put us, first we were in Maui Prep. They passed out toilet paper because they wouldn't let us use the bathroom. I guess we looked like leprosy people to them in our dark skin. Then we went to Baldwin High, now I'm at where all Lahaina. We need help because we're being told by people from the mainland who are culturally insensitive to fill out papers that will give the America, which I am a forced American. I'm not a proud American. I am forced to be American in Hawaii. You're telling us to fill out this paperwork so that you can give us the least amount of money. All I've had since day one is seven hundred dollars. FEMA is fighting with SBA. I walked out yesterday because I'm hearing conflicting stories of what paper I should fill out. We need meetings in Lahaina. So many people, my employees, they're Filipino and, you know, they're Filipino. They don't know how to fill these papers out. Four out of five of us lost our homes, it was burned to the ground. We are only being told, stand in this line, sign here. What are we signing? Who is it benefiting, us or America? And I want to know when we get to go back to our home in Waimea. Maybe it's gone, but there, for reasons that I don't want to discuss, we need to go back there. Are you guys gonna just scrape it all away and say disaster zone? And America's gonna get what they want, their satellite city? Because this was planned years ago. It's now happening. And all the poor people, the wholeness, the hard-working people of the hotels, the Kapuna, we lost everything so you could have your satellite city. This isn't fair. I feel like I was used. I feel like crap on the ground. This is not right and we should not be treated this way. We're in a hotel and we have no communication. I cannot watch the news. I don't know what's going on. I just happened to see on Facebook, there's a meeting here. We couldn't even have our pastor come in and ask us if we need prayer in the very beginning, but Oprah could come in. Who is she? Who is she? They said, oh, she knows the governor. We didn't need her in there in Baldwin High. Get her out. We don't know, we also don't need people like Kainisheki telling tourists, don't come to Maui. Because some of us, thousands of us, work in the hotel industry. They pay our mortgage, they give us our medical. And the medical, besides the county, is pretty good for somebody old like me. So don't go tell tourists, don't come Maui because you're not speaking for us, the working people. You're speaking for yourself. Tourists, come, we love you, we have aloha. You have gave us money through your donations. We're not saying, don't come, come. Because you're, you will be helping us, the lower people. The grains of sand of Maui is what we are. We're not the ones living up in Lania Poku. Not one of those houses burned. Puamana is still there. Lahaina Shores is still there. Everything beyond the civic center is there, but the homes where we were working, where we were scraping, where we had less than a thousand dollars a month to pay for our basic needs of gas and food. We busted our ass and this is what we get? Nobody called us. Our phones didn't work from five in the morning. The fire was not, ten o'clock when I went to work, the fire was still there. There was no water. Tell me if that's not coincidence. No water, no warning. And everybody talking about the satellite city before the fire. Lahaina gonna be the first satellite city. Well, hey, Jeff Bezos, you got what you wanted. Oprah, you got what you wanted. And the guy who owns or not, you got what you wanted. Fuck us all over, that's what happened. We need help in Lahaina. Who's gonna come now and ask us, can I pray for you, Athi?
Thank you.
Can I help you with your paperwork? Because all we got so far was seven hundred dollars and we don't know who to call or anything. It's culturally insensitive in that zone.
My name is Joe Gross and I'm testifying on behalf of twenty-three-dash-one-ninety-four. I am the Vice President of Synergy Disaster Recovery and so I appreciate you affording me three minutes today. I've been a guest of your community for the last week and I've been able to talk to community members and volunteers and members of your Public Works. I just want to say the outpouring of support and the way the community has come together is like anything I've ever seen before. Even like my local partner here, Stan Tech Engineering and Environmental Consulting, been open arms, took me into their office, gave me a place to stay for a little bit. And so just, well, why am I here? Right? I'm here because I'm no stranger to disaster. Again, as a disaster recovery consultant, we focus on the financial recovery, the FEMA public assistance and the debris monitoring. And December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, my community in Boulder County, Colorado, undertook a very similar disaster. And by December thirty-first, it was the most destructive fire in state history. And it took eighteen hundred buildings down. And I fortunately was able to assist that community. So when I saw fires here, I jumped on a plane as soon as I could to provide whatever service I can. You know, if it's just a sounding board, if I could provide some best practices, you know, those type of things to make sure you can learn from other people's events. Every disaster is unique, I get that. I was able to put Somebody in Public Works in touch with an engineer from Larimer County who had the largest fire in Colorado history, which I also worked two years ago, three years ago, it was twenty-twenty. So I just wanted to make myself available for questions, whether it's here or later, to be able to provide whatever I can to help. I've been on Debris Task Force, the state of Florida, after Hurricane Ian, spearheading the vehicle and vessel removal. You know, did the Oregon fires of twenty-twenty, New Mexico, Hermit Peak Fire, their largest fire. So I presented on wildfire recovery at conferences and the FEMA Public Assistance Program and Debris Management. So again, just wanted to say hi, thank you. My heart goes out to your entire community because I've been there unfortunately.
Ano'a i ke aloha in amaka maka makahia. My name is Ayemokuchi. I am actually a resident of Kuho Lele'a in Kohoma in Lahaina. My family has been in Lahaina from time immemorial, as far as I understand from my ancestry. The original home site for our family was on Prison Street and it was a kuliana tract that's still in our family down there. I understand it's burnt down. My grandfather's house, which was in Kelaua'au Ma'aka, is also burnt down that my cousins lived in. And my aunt's house is burnt down in that very same area. They are all homeless. I think some of them have gotten into hotels, but they're all looking for need, you know, in that place. My family, I'm speaking on behalf of the Mayelua family because it's our family from Lahaina. We basically want accountability of people who are responsible for this. So we have questions in regards to the electric company, why they never turned off the power that day? And they should be held liable for this. People should be held liable for this because this is gross negligence. There should be standard operating procedure that that power should have been turned off. And people's lives have been lost because of that. Fortunately, in my family, we haven't lost anyone immediately or my cousins and things like that. But many other friends have lost their family members. And so we want accountability of people, that electric company, the police. Why did the police block people from coming and exiting? They had lines of people lined on Front Street. We heard testimony from people on top of Facebook that said and things that said that basically the police was blocking the road over there by Chart House and that the lines was not down from Wahiku'li yet. And hundreds of people were backed up there with people in their cars and a lot of people lost their lives, from what I understand. And why is not the police officer that was over there? He should be investigated. That was at the only place, Kelaua'au Ma'aka, where Halemaha'alu burnt down. I was told by people who escaped there on foot that the officer had blocked the road, people could not get out. My brother literally had to go cut the chain off of the old Sugar Mill Camp area to let people out at the top of Kelaua'au Ma'aka. And that's how people got out because the roads were all blocked because the police were blocking it. This is what I'm hearing. And we want accountability. It needs to be investigated by a third party that is not associated with the government. That is not associated. Investigators should come in and they should look at this. Right now, there's gross negligence, possibly criminal negligence on this part. People in Lahaina are angry, like other people have testified. We don't trust the government because of what has happened. I'm an attorney myself and I question, there's so many things that are questionable that has happened here. And we want this to be, we want the trust to be restored in the government situation. And we need to have clarity, transparency on all these things. We were blocked out from coming back into Lahaina. I was blocked out several days, I could not come in. It was chaos, people was rioting at the stops. People told us it was fires, but my cousins told me it actually was riots going on over there. Right? With the police officers, wanting, families wanting to get in. It was mad craziness in the beginning. Now it's all kind of settled down, but we still don't trust the government. We're wondering what's on those documents for FEMA? You know, and I'm like, I don't know what's on the documents myself. And my cousins are asking me what should be signed, what shouldn't be signed. I said, I haven't seen any documents, I don't even know. And we're afraid to sign documents because right after that, the governor says, oh, I'm going to take the land. Right? He's talking about the state wants to purchase all this land and come in and open it for the working class and also for memorial and things like that. Who the hell does he think that he should get this land? This land belongs to the people already. The government is, wait, the government is liable for this. Grossly negligent, at least if not criminally negligent, right? And they should clean up all that land, restore that land to the people who own that because they failed here. They failed. The government failed. And then the last point is this, the water and the issue with that water, why all that water wasn't coming down that mountain? From what I understand, they had to go ask the kalo farmers up the mountain about that. There's been arguments in Lahaina about water. I'm Hawaiian, I grow kalo. I agree with water being supplied for kalo and all that. But in an emergency, there's no excuse that the water didn't come down that mountain and that the seaworm held that back. And if Hawaiian families are responsible for that too because of their pressure on the government, they should be reviewed for that action too. And they shouldn't have to say that they had to the point where it destroyed all of Lahaina. That's the other side of it. Because we're hearing half of Lahaina that agrees with this stuff and the other half, now we speaking up because our families are suffering from it, from those policies. And we need to start looking at those policies seriously. And I'm a, like I said, I'm a kalo farmer. I grow kalo myself for my family. I also live off the land, I'm on like land that has water coming down that valley. And I'm off the grid. But I don't agree within an emergency situation that that thing caused this to have no water, no water for the homes, and the fire is burning up the faces. And it's not West Maui land's fault. I want, we want accountability. We want accountability, Lahaina wants accountability. And from what I understand, and I'm not sure if my information is accurate, because it all comes through family and cousins, all right? I was told that West Maui land ordered the water to be taken so that it could go into the hydrants, it could go. And that the person from CS, um, Sea Worm actually said, "Oh, you gotta ask permission from the kalo farmers first before you do this." But West Maui land was like, "No, there's an emergency and we don't care what happens. We want that water to go because there's a fire, there's an emergency, and it needs to do. And we'll deal with the fines later," from what I understand. That's what I was told to the grapevine. I don't know if that's official or not. So it's not West Maui land's fault. It's, they were told, "You gotta go ask the people up in Kaua'ula first if you can go get the water out of there." That's ridiculous. That Sea Worm should actually say something like that in the middle of an emergency.
I understand.
Sea Worm is responsible, but the families that also put the pressure on Sea Worm for this stuff over the past decade should be held accountable for this now. You understand? That's what I'm talking about. It's an emergency, people need water, that's common sense. Open the water, that's what the, that's what the water people ask for.
Mr. Chi.
Yeah.
The diversion is not connected to the fire hydrant. And the helicopters, I understand what you heard, I heard the same thing.
The whole reservoir up there was asking me.
And the fire, the fire department could not allow choppers to take water from the reservoir because of the 80 mile per hour winds. So, and, and I know you know that the Sea Worm Deputy Director is not more powerful than the governor. So if the governor wanted it, the governor could have ordered it.
I'm not blaming.
Yeah? Okay, let's not have a debate.
Mr. Kaleo for this thing, I don't know, I don't know all the facts. All I know, this is what's being said in Lahaina. We want accountability. We want your message clearly put out and the facts put out so we know what we're really dealing with. Because I don't want lies either. You understand? I don't want lies from either side, we want the truth. That's all we asking for, okay? So I don't want to accuse people of things wrongly. And if you have the answers, put the answers out there.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree with you.
I'm sorry if I accuse people wrongly, but I don't mean to accuse anybody wrongly. But this is what, this is the plight of what's happening in Lahaina. We're hearing this from the local people, and you've heard other people from Lahaina saying the same thing. We're frustrated because of this. And we're frustrated with the policies that have been set. And we're just asking, why, why is our town burnt down? Why are our families' houses gone? And if you can explain that to us in a logical, reasonable way, we'll accept it. But right now, there is no explanation, right? All I see in the newspaper is two sides arguing, from what I saw on Civil Point, uh, Civil Rights or whatever that magazine is, Newspaper Civil Beat. And then the other side was The Guardian putting out stuff. But then I hearing stuff on the other side, and I'm like, hey, somebody's spinning this story. People are using this for their advantage politically, and it shouldn't be done, either on pro Kanaka side or the other side. We just gotta get this thing, and it should be transparency in this. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Aloha mai kako, I'm Nui Lani'a'iia, I'm testifying on my own time and my own behalf. There's a lot of trauma in our community, and rightfully so. And it's gonna be like this for a long time. So I'm calling for all actions that the county takes to be trauma-informed. Maybe we need to bring in some specialists to train county staff and workers and even you folks about what it means to be trauma-informed so that we can hold a space for our people that acknowledges the grief, that acknowledges the anger, the pain, the suffering, the confusion, the suicidal ideations. I've been working with the Mono Medics, which I co-founded in 2017. And we've been working as the medical branch of Bi-Rapid Response to get services to the west side, to the places where they didn't have government hubs. So we've been at Honokawai, as turns Bohaku Park, Kahana Boat Ramp. Now we're in Royal Lahaina Marriott. And we're trying to bring some little sense of stability and calm in a very, very frenetic situation. When we go into fight or flight, blood doesn't get to the front of our brain. Our prefrontal cortex stops functioning. And we get outside of our body. And when that happens, that's when we might hurt each other because we can't think clearly and we can't witness our experience. So I'm encouraging folks who are listening at home to please get some embodied work, go get a lomi, get some acupuncture. There are practitioners all over Maui right now who are reaching out, trying to help people pull them back into their bodies and start to just very gently do psychological first aid because our people are hurting. I wanted to thank Councilmember Tamara Paulton, Councilmember Rollins Fernandez, Councilmember Nohi Uuhajins, I saw you out there too with your vest. I saw Councilmember Gabe out there yesterday. This is, this is not about titles or labels or hierarchy or leaders. This is about our people coming together and building a community of care because it's what we need. It's what we've needed for a long time, but now we don't have a choice. And if we continue to work towards building, building communities of care, we can create a future where we don't see this kind of tragedy anymore, where we're in relationship with our aina, where the waters flow freely, and where our government supports our people and stands behind us in our self-determination to take care of ourselves. And that goes for all people, starting with Kanaka at the Piko, and then our multi-generational families, and then our newcomers as well. We can aloha ke kahi i ke kahi, malama each other, and create a future that's, that's worth living. I just want to say one more thing. The other day, I snapped a picture, it's been shared a lot, but there was a kalo plant that was growing out of the ash up in Hawaiian homes. That reminded me, it reminded me of the resilience of our people, our ancestor, Hala'o'a, and that we have the opportunity to make pono here if we stick together. Auntie Aloha Huino Kiala Pono told me the other day, we gotta hold hands and not let go. All of us.
Testifier Skywalker testifying on... I've only had a chance to read over very quickly the resolution, but what I read indicates to me that this council and this county with the emergency proclamation is in a position of tremendous latitude. The power, there is tremendous latitude in the power available to the county council and the county at this moment in time. And my intention with making comments is to invoke a sense of recognition and honor and support and aloha for you. This is, this is a leadership challenge beyond the magnitude that I could have ever imagined for this, this little island, for our home. And, you know, specifically, there have been testimony about things like modular homes. And, you know, just, and this is just one very small example. Modular homes, is that the right, is that the right thing? You know, when we have tremendous available vacant second homes that are roofs, proper roofs that are vacant, and the county has, the mayor, to my reading of the emergency proclamation, has eminent domain. So, so is it appropriate to exercise that power? Or is it appropriate to set up, you know, plastic sheds for temporary housing? And, and I just cannot, I, again, those are not the questions that I'm in a position to answer. Those are the questions that I understand that you're in a position to be evaluating and responding to in this just staggeringly unthinkable time. And to echo what Shay and Tiari said, you know, it's, it's a vulnerable time too, to corrupting power forces. And anything that I, as a resident and, and member of this community, can do to support your leadership and, and the community's healing is my wish and...
Hi, my name's Kevin Phillips. I'm the former Town Manager of the Town of Paradise. I'm testifying for the Town of Paradise. In 2018, the Town of Paradise was destroyed by the campfire, and we lost over 18,000 structures. The one thing we know that is the most important for, to bring people home is housing. And we're here to, to help with that in any way possible, to give lessons learned, to really understand the nuances to bringing that housing funding that is, that is, that should go to the people to bring them back home. And so all we're doing today is just, we're offering our support to Maui and to all of the people that live there in any way possible. So please, if there's anything that you, you need, please reach out. And the council has already passed a resolution opening up all funding mechanisms for any support that, that the Town of Paradise could give.
Just for your information, we have been in close contact with Paradise County.
For referral to the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Committee is Resolution 23-194, Developing a Comprehensive Recovery and Resiliency Plan in Response to the Island of Maui's Tragic Wildfires of August 2023.
Members, are there any objections of referral of this resolution to the great committee?
No.
Member Paulton.
Um, thank you, Chair. I don't, I don't have any objection on referral to great. I have been in communication with Member Uuhajins. I just wanted to make a quick discussion, if that's okay.
Sure, discussion.
I just wanted to comment, you know, um, thank you to everyone for mentioning my name, but I just wanted to comment that my colleagues, all of them, have been very supportive of this time. And you may not see everyone out on the west side, but, you know, Member Rollins Fernandez was one of the first ones through the first day that people could get through. Councilmember Tom Cook and his office got a three-phase generator with the associated power cord. Member Kama's office is working on getting Chromebooks for private tutoring for our students and tarps from Charlie and, and things like that. So I just wanted to let the public know that although you may not see everyone in, in our community, everybody is, is very supportive and, and doing what they can to support.
Thank you for including everybody.
I just wanted to echo the, you know, what Member Paulton mentioned in her opening remarks. And we heard repeatedly by testifiers today that we center community in decision-making. And if that means going to the west side so that those whose car is burned, internet still not up, those that are in shelter in the hotels, so that they can attend because we need our community to be centered in this and not feel excluded or be excluded by having our meetings here in the council chambers. So I just wanted to advocate on, on Member Paulton and the West Maui community's behalf, mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. I think most members would agree with that. And of course, the chair is gonna be Uuhajins, but I'm sure she would agree that we should have most of our meetings out there and figure out any which way we can help people testify, whether we have to go on the beaches or whatever we have to do. It won't matter because it, it means that much. When we said it's gonna be for and from the community, we meant it.
Mahalo, Chair. Mahalo for that assurance. And I hope we can also give the community time to grieve and process. I, I know that it's been said many times that this will be a marathon. And there are components of it that are a sprint. But I just, we're still locating the remains of loved ones. And there's the people who, who still haven't even made time and space to grieve. So I just wanted to ensure that we're also honoring that request, mahalo, Chair.
Member Sinancy.
Mahalo, Chair. For my opportunity, I just wanted to add that it was nice to, to visit with the, the families that were affected yesterday with President Biden's visit and his wife Jill. I think the important message and, and a lot of state government officials and our county officials were there when they did hear the president say that he wants to move forward with the input of the Lahaina community. So I think everybody heard the president loud and clear. And so we're, hopefully, that we can go ahead and, and take his lead on that. Thank you.
Yes, that's right. And then if I may add one last thing, you know, from a practical point of view, we're the body that has actually the time to go and gather the information from the community because the federal agencies, the state agencies, and even the administration is still very much preoccupied with search and recovery. So I think it's incumbent upon us to take the lead in getting the input from the community on what their priorities are. And the reason why it's important, even though it's difficult because they still are grieving and are hurt and are angry and frustrated and so forth, if we don't collect this information in an orderly and timely manner, then others may be making decisions for them. And so we will, with the information we collect, we will have information that is accurate and represents the community and can be confirmed, and it's gonna be on the record. So when we say the community wants X, we know what we're saying, and we can prove it. We can prove it. So it's important for us to proceed to get the information that, so that when the time comes and the money starts flowing from the federal government and the state government, that the money is spent in the right places. Pro Tem Kama.
Thank you, Chair. I think in reference to what Member Rollins Fernandez had spoken about in terms of being sensitive to timing, that I would like to at least allow Member Paulton to determine when it's okay for us to go and how she plans it with her community. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I would defer to Member Paulton the time and the place and the space. Thank you.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. I, I feel a little bit like the first days, you know, where I had to go outside to communicate and then I'm not communicating in real time with the people inside West Maui. I think at least another week or so before posting. But, you know, if, if we start out with, with some listening sessions and perhaps the hotels, hotels will let us do their ballroom for one. Maybe the, maybe Maui Prep would let us use their gymnasium. But a lot of folks lost their vehicles. You know, getting a shuttle up and running, I think, is one of the things that, that are in the works. So once people have their housing a little bit more firmed up and their transportation, new transportation methods firmed up, and, and then they can start processing their feelings. I think it's important too, when we, we set up these listening sessions, that we are clear on what is the topic. I know, and, and I believe that there does need to be accountability. But we need to sort out, you know, which meeting is for which and stay focused on the topic of the meeting at hand. So if we're having a meeting on accountability, it's all about accountability. If we're having a meeting on moving forward through housing, it's all on that. And, and communicate that we're not just gonna go out there one time for one issue, I think. Unless by some miracle, everyone starts to get power and connection. But, you know, while everything Laniapoku and south of there wasn't really affected by fire, I think those folks are still without power and connection. And so, you know, while some people lost everything, some people... And so, you know, while some people lost everything, some people didn't necessarily lose anything, but they're still struggling to connect with the outside world. And, and there's a lot of, um, conspiracy and, and different rumors that go along with not having readily access to an unbiased source of information. When people have a vacuum of information, then everything becomes true or false, you know? So, um, hoping within the next week or two that we can have people more settled in their, where they are gonna live at least for like six months out. Transportation figured out, um, hopefully some sort of power system for those south of Laniapoko and south. Um, but it's, it's, it's a different world inside there and it's, it's amazing to come outside here and it feels like everything is, is kind of normal, you know? I'm on blue jeans and I can call wherever I stand and, um, and all the stores are open and the gas station is open and the bank is still standing. Like I asked someone to go pay my mortgage because my bank burned down and I lost my slip, you know? So, um, it's just those little things that we're kind of dealing with right now. I'm, I'm behind on my mortgage payment myself, you know, because the bank burned down. Um, and, and so like one or two more weeks, I'm hoping we're in a better, better place, but you know, the only way I can reassess is by being inside and driving to all the places and talking to all the people. Because, um, everybody's situation is unique and that's, that's just because of, I don't, I don't know why everyone can't come online at the same time. I don't know why some subdivisions have power and some don't. But, but that's how it is right now. And so, uh, just trying to get everybody to the place where, you know, you can go to the store and buy some milk if you want to. Um, and, and then we can move forward with, with, um, hearing, hearing from them. Because I don't want them to tell you, I wanna be able to watch the news and, and buy some milk. I wanna them to, you know, have a chance to formulate a, a good thought of where we want to go.
Okay. Um, I understand what you're saying, but keep in mind that the idea was to come up with priorities, their priorities. They come up with the priorities. They tell us what the priorities are. I, I envisioned that process taking, uh, a week or so, if not a little bit longer. And once the priority list is established, then the work goes into committees, which means you continue to work with them on the solutions. But before you can get to the solutions, we have to understand the order of the problems. So we don't want to start with housing when communications should be first. See what I'm saying? And if we, if we don't act to, you know, if we wait too long, the problem is, uh, the decisions are gonna be made without us. I mean, you know, look at all the proclamations that have come down. So that's my fear. At least if we had the information, we can fight for the community and say, this is what they want. They told us this is what they want.
Thank you, Chair. Um, from day one, it's been communications and power. Um, communications and power are the priorities. Um, without it, we're, we're having to get gas for the generators, ice for the food and communications. We don't know what's going on. So communications and power are definitely the priority since day one.
You know, and, and we need to, once we nail down the priorities, that we need to communicate and fight for that. You know, because the, the federal government may not agree with us. But it's, you know, that's outside of our realm of, of authority. But at least we'll have the information and at least we'll have, you know, know the fact that, that we are with the community and they told us. And then so we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to keep our promise to them. The, my only concern, like I said, is the fear of the federal government deciding for us which order they're gonna help us in, you know? They're gonna follow a different order and different order of priority. And then that's gonna just make it harder and, because, you know, we've seen what happened in the disaster. Everything was disorganized, right? Lack of coordination, lack of communication. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm just saying that's the truth. So if we can avoid some of that going forward, you know, let's, let, at least try. And then the person who's gonna chair the committee should have something to say. What do you, do you have any comments?
Sure. Um, thank you, Chair. I wanna just ensure that our Lahaina community is well represented and well heard. Um, I would feel terribly uncomfortable, to the point where I would like have itchy skin if we did anything that, you know, overstepped our boundaries to the Lahaina people. I hear what you're saying. I don't want to be, I don't wanna lose our power too, especially because we are the most public of the government forum. And we have the ability to take in testimony, which is why I think it's important to make sure Lahaina community is heard. Um, I too would like to defer to member Paulton when the community is ready. And you have the best information out there since you are there every single day. Um, and we've had this conversation before. I don't wanna leave you out of the communication. I don't wanna leave you out of this meeting. I don't wanna leave the Lahaina community out of this meeting. Um, and I'm happy to do whatever works best. I'm gonna, I'm happy to facilitate this meeting. I just wanna ensure that we have the best public participation we can. And we don't begin a discussion that the community isn't ready for. I don't know how long I would take to begin this conversation if I lost everything. So I just wanna be sensitive to that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So we are at the point of voting to refer this to committee, your committee. And it just so happens that the vice chair is member Paulton. So it should be a good combination. All those in favor of the motion?
When a order? Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Any objections?
No objections.
No objections. So ordered. Very good. Thank you.